Just so that everybody knows, it's been a while since I've actually conducted a public hearing like this in my position. So I may struggle a little bit, but we'll give each other some latitude here. So, um, good evening. My name's Tom Wannless. I'm a lieutenant with the, and I'm going to read this just so that you guys know that. I'm a lieutenant with the Department of Natural Resources Law Enforcement Division. I'll be serving as the hearing officer for this public hearing regarding the resolution passed by the charter township of Bloomfield, Oakland County. It is, now this is 5:32, we're behind schedule. 5:32, and this hearing is now in session, and it is being recorded. With me tonight from the DNR, to my left, your right, is Corporal Ken Lowell, who will be assisting, just taking notes and stuff like that. For those that are going to be coming up and talking, this is not, this, I'm going off script here. We may not be looking at you when you are talking. Please don't get offended by that. We're taking notes or looking, looking things up. So it's not that we're ignoring you or anything like that at all. Also, I believe, Chief, did you want to say anything?
I'm all set. I mean, these are your hearings.
Okay, I, okay.
If I need to, if you have any questions, I'll be your trooper for a little bit.
Okay, go ahead, sir. I'll let you go.
Okay.
Uh, wherever you want to go from, sir.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Vida. I'm a captain with the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, and I'm here to represent Sheriff Michael Bouchard to discuss the local water for control. Specifically, the sheriff wants the record to reflect that he supports Bloomfield's township's efforts to keep watercraft controls under local control. Specifically, watercraft control is best suited by the choice for the residents in the community. They should decide specifically what they want, and they can make their choices with that appropriately. And additionally, as the lakes have currently been designated, there haven't really been any issues, and the view is that things simply shouldn't change. By changing these designations from electronic only to all sports, it'll have a negative impact on the homeowners who specifically purchased their property, you know, based on what that lake is at that point. If the designation changes and this becomes a true all-sports lake, then the sheriff's office is going to have to be, you know, involved in the protection of those waterways and the resources therein. So, thank you.
And you're going to put together a quick comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then I'll try to read that at the beginning of the one, so you don't have to stick around if you don't want to, if you don't want to stick around. Yep, that works for me. Um, okay. Is there any other appointed or elected governmental official in the room? If there is, okay. Please stand and, stand and be, state, just state your name, your position, and just so that you can be recognized.
Sure, and I have a comment too. So, Martin Brook, local township clerk.
Valerie, local township trustee.
Jeremy Moss, state senator.
Yes.
Let him show his stack, trade it.
Okay, perfect. All right. Just wanted to, thank, thank you folks for being here tonight, and just wanted to recognize you. You've earned it. So just wanted to recognize you. All right, I'm going to read through some more information here. The DNR is responsible for the administration of Part 801 Marine Safety of Public Act 451, the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act, also known as NARA. You may hear that referenced tonight. Just letting you know that's what it is. It's the laws. The act identifies the DNR is the only entity that can establish additional regulations on the waters of this state for recreational purposes. The act also provides a process for local political subdivisions to request the DNR to investigate the need for a local regulation. By law, local regulations can only be considered to assure the compatibility of uses and to protect public safety when existing laws cannot adequately do so. Although near and dear to the DNR's mission, environment, habitat, erosion, and other concerns cannot be considered in this process. Here's a real quick condensed version of what this process, how this process works. So upon receiving an official resolution from a local political subdivision, the DNR shall initiate an investigation and inquiry. Part of that process includes conducting a hearing to collect public comments. Upon the completion of the investigation and public hearing, the department will review the pertinent information and provide a recommendation to the local political subdivision. Depending on the request in the resolution, whether it's specific, meaning they want something specific, or if it's broad-based, hey, we have problems and we need help, the recommendation may be what was submitted to the department. The recommendation could be no change at all, or something else. The local political subdivision will then have 60 days to approve or disapprove any recommendation of change from the department. If approved, and a local ordinance is adopted, the language of the ordinance must be identical to the DNR's recommendation. Tonight's hearing is regarding the charter township of Bloomfield's request that the Department of Natural Resources consider establishing an electric motor-only and a slow no-wake local watercraft control on several lakes. Currently, the meeting we're in right now is for Solden Lake. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested the opportunity to provide information that the DNR can use in determining a recommendation on the township's resolution, and again, for this lake. Please recognize the DNR can only use the information if it relates to the criteria we are only required to use when making that recommendation. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the township's request. We will be happy to take note of your position, but please understand that the DNR is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to any recommendation or restrictions. I believe, I believe there was some miscommunication being circulated when this process started regarding the current regulations, the township's request, and the process going forward. The township created certain ordinances controlling and regulating watercraft, including prohibiting certain motorized vessels on several lakes, Solden Lake being one. When establishing these ordinances, the township did not have the authority making these ordinances invalid and unenforceable. The township is now trying to establish local controls through the proper process, and has requested the DNR to investigate the need for these local controls as described in Part 801. So now we're going to run through the procedures real quick, hopefully. As you came in this evening, we request that you sign, and there's a sign-in sheet back there, there's several of them, but the one for Solden Lake, please. You were also given an opportunity to fill out a public comment sheet back there. Anyone wishing to comment must fill out the comment sheet and indicate if you wish to make a comment during the hearing, or just provide a written comment on the form. We will use these sheets to maintain a record of people interested in the investigation, any written comments, and to call upon those who wish to speak tonight. To ensure the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. I will call those who have indicated on the public comment sheet that they would like to speak in the general order in which the sheets were turned in. When the individuals who requested to speak have completed, I'll ask if there's anyone else who'd make an additional comment. When your name is called, please come to the microphone, face me, and make your statement. If you have written comments or materials that you would like to present, please hand them to me as you come up to the microphone. As you begin your comments, please state very clearly your name, your address, and if you are affiliated or representing any type of a group or association that you, that you're representing. Each person will have three minutes to make their comments. Myself, or Corporal Lowell, will indicate when 30, when you have 30 seconds left. Please begin to wrap up your comments and end with an allotted time. If need be, I will indicate when your time has ended. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Only one person should be speaking at a time. Please do not interrupt a speaker, and please also recognize that we are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed watercraft control and to listen to those other comments. The DNR is here to collect additional pertinent information regarding this proposal. This meeting is not an exchange between the individuals providing comments and us. However, I may ask a clarifying question. How this information is going to be used? This hearing will be recorded, and your comments will be part of the information the DNR may consider in making its recommendation to the township's proposal or proposed resolution. The public comment, there will be a public comment period for 30 days after, after tonight. You may submit written comments by email no later than 5:00 PM on December 16th, 2023. Mailed comments must be postmarked no later than December 12th, 2023. Additional information and comments may be submitted too, and most of you already have this information, but it's going to be either a shared mailbox, and I can actually put a sheet back there, my email address. Corporal Miller, we will not be using her for this, for these moving forward, or our secretary, Denise Rogeski, and I can put those out there. Following the close of the public comment period, can you gather any comment, um, um, comment sheets back there, please? Following the close of the public comment period, the DNR will provide a recommendation on the township's proposal and submit it to them. The DNR and township officials work together to schedule these public hearings for the 10 lakes which were identified in the resolutions for convenience and availability. There will be five hearings tonight, and each will be scheduled for a specific time to start. In the event we are, we have not completed all of the public speaking requests five minutes prior to the start of the next meeting, this meeting will be temporarily adjourned so that we can start the next meeting. We will then resume the original hearing after, or later this evening when we are available to do so, whether it's right after the next meeting, or if it's got to be, you know, a couple of meetings down the road. So everyone who wishes to speak will have that opportunity. We will be grabbing these sheets right now, and if there are anybody that wishes to speak, and we'll start that process. Do we have any sheets?
We have, folks are going to fill out a couple.
Okay, yes, and again, okay, if you, oh, yes, if you, okay, thank you. Hang on just a second though before you start, Martin. If you wish to speak, you do not, speak here at the podium, you do not need to fill this out because your comments will be noted and also recorded. If you do not wish to speak, you have stage fright, or you just don't feel comfortable doing it, that's fine. You can make your comments on here and just turn them in, and we will accept them as well too. As well as during the public comment period, the 30-day public comment period, you'll be able to email your comments to us as well too. So, with that, we've got one here. A couple more, come, okay. Okay, you timing? Okay, all right. Again, three minutes, please. Be courteous, and go ahead, Martin.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. My name is Martin Brook. I'm the Bloomfield Township Clerk, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees pursuant to resolution from the Board of Trustees passed in October. We ask that the DNR approve the proposed ordinances. I will summarize the basis for that request during this verbal comment and explain more in detail in subsequent written comments. There are many lakes in the township. Most are quite small. Two lakes are all sports lakes. 10 lakes that we're discussing during the next two days of public hearings are presently no motorboat lakes. Eight of them are under 65 acres, and most of those are half the size or smaller, like Solden Lake. As far as township records reveal, since 1950s, residents have wanted these lakes to be motorboat-free. As you will hear, they still do. The fact that through a neighborhood agreement or ordinance, these small lakes have been non-motorized for over 60 years points to approving the proposed ordinance because, as you know, historical use and lake size are two statutory factors the DNR considers when reviewing proposed local controls. Another statutory factor is whether the water body is public or private. There's also ways in favor of the proposed ordinances. The 10 lakes under considerations are all private lakes, quote-unquote, without public access. DNR approval of the ordinances will not infringe on the right of the general public, nor will infringe upon the owners who want these rules and are purchased their homes, fully aware that they would live on a no-motorboat lake. The presence of conflicts, complaints, and accidents, and whether existing law adequately regulates the lakes are four other statutory factors. The lakes are safe and free of complaints, accidents, or conflicts because of the longstanding historical expectation of the township, expectation of the residents, and the township ordinance prohibiting motorboating. People want to keep it that way, safe and free of conflicts, complaints, and accidents. If the DNR does not approve any regulation, the existing law will not adequately regulate the activities on the lakes. Under existing state law, outside of 100 feet from shore and over three feet of depth, boats can travel 55 miles per hour. So, how far is 100 feet? The boardroom we're in today is actually 50 feet in distance. 100-foot ring around larger lakes in question leaves room for motorboats, jet skis, and even wake surfing. It is the same area of the lake that other users would want to be in. Conflicts will arise. Accidents could happen. In reality, it will only take one or two people on each lake with a jet ski or wake boat to interfere with all other present uses. Swimmers, stand-up paddlers, sailors, kayakers could all be chased off of these small lakes. Bottom line, if the current users, users don't actually relinquish the lake to motorboaters, it is likely that conflicts, complaints, and accidents will happen because of existing state laws that regulate, because existing state laws that regulate boating are inadequate. I have a, I have a couple of other items that are in the written comment I provided, but I'll, let me wrap up. The Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees, which I am here to represent, request that the DNR approve its proposed ordinances so that these lakes will remain no-motorboat lakes, and will preclude high-powered electric motors in their operation above slow no-wake speeds. I will provide support and documentation and in a subsequent written public comment. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, uh, speak, yes. Jeremy Moss. Am I saying it right? Don't get me wrong.
Good evening. I'm Jeremy Moss. I'm the state senator here representing Bloomfield Township. I don't have too much more to add than what the clerk said, and I know a few of the trustees and the treasurer are going to speak as well, but I wanted to at least express my support for the township's position and its ability to main local control over these lakes. I think that everything that the clerk said, especially detailing the process, is consistent with the department's issuing of the support for local ordinances in other communities, specifically here in Oakland County. And I think that, you know, having a public hearing here is important, and it is a reflection of our small D democratic process. And it's important to restore trust between government institutions and our residents, that our residents are heard. I've gone through many exercises where constituents protest or, or have a communication with our departments and just don't feel like their opinions are heard on a local level. So I, I know that this process will be by, by the rules here, but I am hopeful that as you continue to go lake by lake, and I'm putting this statement across the board for all the lakes coming up and consistent with the township's position, you really will take into account the temperature and tenor here within the township to maintain local control, to support these ordinances. And at least as somebody who represents the township and has been in a lot of communication with the Board of Trustees here, I support firmly the township's position. I know that there's a 30-day period to submit written comments, so you will also have a written comment from my office with more detail about my support. So I didn't want to let this hearing go by without at least saying I'm listening to the constituents that have come to me with these concerns, and I stand with them. Thank you.
Michael, I'm going to pronounce your last name wrong, but I know it starts with a S-C-H, it looks like.
Yes, that's me.
But you can still state your name.
I certainly will. Michael Showstack.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, I know, I know. I give you the benefit of the doubt. I am the treasurer here in Bloomfield Township. I've been on the Board of Trustees for seven years, and, you know, I just want to reiterate everything that Clerk Brook said. I think that, sorry, I'm blowing water. Need a water? Or some in the back? Was there? Sorry.
We won't count this against you, your three minutes. Long as we can get it done by 5:55, so we can be ready for the next one.
Okay, sorry. Um, so I don't have all the facts and figures that Clerk Brook had, but I think you'll hear from the residents that we really, no, I'm so nervous.
It's your room.
It is, it is. I'm usually up there, though.
Want to sit up here?
So, you know, these ordinances were from before I was born, and the residents live here because of those ordinances. So I know I don't have all the legal facts and all the things you listed from the statute, but it's important to the residents that they be able to keep a quiet lake, they can use a paddleboat, no motors. It's part of their quality of life, and, and that's what they love about Bloomfield Township. So, I'll submit more at later, but.
Sure.
I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to get up and, um, okay.
That's my written comment.
Okay, okay. Again, we will accept written comments. Tonight, we will accept them for the next 30 days. So if you don't feel comfortable talking, that's, that's, that is, whether you stand up in front of the room, or you send us an email, or you make a comment like this and give it to us, it's all going to be considered the same. It's all going to be looked at the same. So it's not, it's not a big deal, anyway or the other. So. He might, he may say one, one comment here.
This is your last chance to keep what you have. Please don't rely just on us.
And, and, and please refrain from saying this is your last chance to keep what you have, because that's not factual.
Well, based on the preliminary description of what came to us, if people don't talk, that is a good chance.
Well, I.
But you can't blame the DNR if you don't talk. You cannot blame them if you don't talk.
There's no, there's no, there's no blaming of anybody. We, we can't be blaming anybody. There's, you know, no, no, this is all good. This is, this is all good. I mean, we're, we're here to listen to anybody's, anybody's input, but I just, I mean, there's no decisions that have been made. There will be no decision made on anything here tonight. There will be no decision made for at least 30 days because we, we want to honor that 30-day period. Yes, ma'am.
I submitted the written comment, but I'm, I will also speak.
Okay, okay. Well, how about after this, gentlemen, you, we let you jump up, and then, and then that, then if we're going to do anything forward beyond that, we're going to have to take an adjournment, just so that people know, just so that we can be set up for the next meeting. Carl, go ahead. Please state your name again.
Yes, Carl Botvinick, and Sandy and I are here tonight. We live on Solden Lake, and to put it briefly, we're happy with the way things are, and we like to have no changes.
Thanks.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I was just, I'm just, and I know this is being recorded, but I'm trying to make some notes as well, too. So, okay, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Murray. I am a resident since 1985 and a trustee since 2020. So I live in the township. I do not have access to these lakes, but I am passionate about them because I have access to Walnut Lake, an all-sports lake, always has been an all-sports lake. Unfortunately, it's dying because it's had environmental issues, which we're trying to figure out what to do with that. But Walnut Lake is 233 acres, and there are 10 different lakes we're going to talk about over the next two meetings. And the largest one is 110 or 111, I believe. I don't have my notes in front of me. And they're just entirely too small to allow fast boating. It's just too dangerous. There just isn't enough acreage there. Going back to the late 70s, dating myself here, I was one of the first owners of a jet ski. Don't everybody get mad? My husband and I were young, and we had a jet ski, and nobody knew what they were. Nobody wanted to insure it. Nobody knew how to insure it, and nobody knew how dangerous they were until people started getting injured and killed because they move fast and, and they move abruptly, and they don't always follow the rules. So that's why I'm really very much in support of maintaining local control. I agree with 100% with Clerk Brook and with how our board feels about keeping, you know, slow speed and, you know, trolling-type motors, just for the safety of the residents. And that is what we're hearing, what our residents want. So I'm just in total support for keeping the local control the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess I need to clarify one thing, too, that maybe some people, and, and again, I think it's just a vocabulary thing. A motorboat is a boat with a motor. An electric motor is a motor. So just so that, so it, just so that people understand that, that a, that an electric motor, even if you take a canoe and you take the little old-fashioned-style trolling motors with a 12-volt battery, you put it on it, that is a motor. And once you put a motor on a vessel too as well, it, you know, now it falls under a different category, and registration and other safety devices are also required. Are you going to speak?
Yep.
Okay. All right. We got three minutes, and we got to start the next meeting. So perfect. Thank you.
So I'm Danny Walsh. I'm the township supervisor. We have had a lot of activity thanks to Martin, all of his work on this. So he has all the facts. You've already heard those. We've had public hearings, and I can honestly tell you, it is very rare that in this community, we have 100% of anything. At every single public hearing, there was not one single person that wanted to change what they have. Again, like Michael, these are older than me. I'm 51, and these are even older than me. There's very few things here that are older. And it's the safety and the peace and the beauty that people move here for. So some of the things that were constantly said in addition to the obvious of the noise, so you're correct, motorboats are all the same except if you have gas versus electric. The noise is what also helps wildlife and beauty come without having a wake. But the biggest thing is, people can swim together, they can have their kids playing out there, and unlike the tragedies that you hear on some of the sports lakes, or my friend who lost a child on Cass Lake, you never hear that in Bloomfield Township. Because of these ordinances, they are safe for families, and they're safe for retirees to all enjoy together. So I beg you to leave them the same. Thank you.
Okay, we got like, like two minutes. Are you coming to speak?
I'd like to just stay a very short.
Oh, okay. Yep, we'll let you, that's not a problem. Like I said, I want everybody to be heard. I just didn't know if I have to cut it off right now, and, but, all right. Go ahead, please step up to the podium.
My name is Suzanne Goldstein. I live on Pine Tree Trail. I am on the board for the Bloomfield Heights Civic Association, and Solden Lake is in the middle of our association. I'm just here to confirm that we as people that live on the, in the association and having Solden Lake in it, only want a non-motorized vehicle lake, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Is this for Solden? Okay, all right, yeah. And then after this one, we are going to have to transition to the next one, but we'll, we'll make it happen.
My name is Jacqueline Blake. I live on Pine Tree Trail. I've lived there for over 50 years. So some things are older than you, Danny. It was appalling to me to think that they were thinking of changing this. Our son used to fish on that lake. We felt very happy because we knew it was safe. It's a beautiful, peaceful neighborhood, and we, no way do we want any kind of change like this at all. I speak for my husband and my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we got six o'clock. All right, we are concluding. This concludes the public hearing. Again, we can, somewhere I have a little statement here that I need to read here, if I can find it. Okay, thank you for your comments and your cooperation. This was probably one of the shortest ones. We appreciate your interest, and, and the time that you took tonight to come up here. I know for some people, that's, it's a little bit nerve-wracking to stand in front of a, a group of people. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit written comments either by mail, no later than 5:00 PM on December 16th, 2023. Mailed copies must be postmarked, I'm sorry, that's email. Postmarked, if you mail it, snail mail it, December 12th has to be postmarked by. That's so that we have it in time and so that we can move forward. Following the closing public comment period, so in 30 days, we will review all pertinent information. we will review all pertinent information and submit our recommendation on the requested proposal after, after that. This hearing is now closed. Good evening. My name is Tom Wannless. I'm a lieutenant with the Department of Natural Resources, Law Enforcement Division, and I'll be serving as the hearing officer for this public hearing regarding a resolution passed by the Charter Township of Bloomfield, Oakland County. It is 6:02. We are behind schedule and this hearing is now in session and it is being recorded. Please keep your voices down, please. With me tonight, who's running around right, right now is cap, or captain. He wishes. Corporal Ken Lowell with the Department of Natural Resources. And I know that the chief of police, I believe, just walked out of here as well as a captain from the sheriff's department. They gave a, a statement earlier in regards to the sheriff's position on these resolutions. So, and I'm going to read that since he's not available. He says, "The sheriff wants, wants the record to reflect that he supports Bloomfield Township's efforts to keep watercraft controls under the local control. Watercraft control is best suited by the residents and the community. They should decide what they want and can make their choices appropriately. As the way the lakes are currently designed, there haven't been any issues. There is simply no need to change. By changing the designation from electric only to all sports lake, it will, all sports, I'm sorry. It will have an impact on the homeowners and why they specifically purchased their property. Furthermore, if the designation changes, the Oakland County Sheriff's Office will have to be on those lakes to handle boating related complaints and incidences." That's coming from the sheriff's department. Captain Tom Vita was just in here to give that. Are there currently any elected or appointed government officials? If so, if you'd stand to be recognized, please state your name and your official position so that we can, that we can recognize you on the record.
I'm Marcia Christensen. I'm the county commissioner. I can represent parts of Bloomfield Township. And I live on Green Lake, which is one of the lakes that's being discussed.
Okay. Okay. It could be old school. It could be old school for you. Okay. And. Yeah, what we do is for the next five, yeah, the next five times. Yep. Okay, thank you. And again, it's, 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 it's on the record, but it's more so that you folks have recognition when this, you know, when the state senator was in here. I, his face. Yeah, his face looked familiar to me because I know I deal, I, I, I work with some of them and meet with some of them, but I, it, it didn't connect. So, but that's okay. All right. This is going to get old for some of you that have, that have been here. So the DNR is responsible for administering Part 801 Marine Safety of Public Act 451, the Natural Resources Environmental Act, also commonly known as NARIPA. The act identifies the DNR as the only entity that can establish additional regulations and local regulations on the waters of this state for recreational purposes. The act also provides a process for local political subdivisions to request the DNR to investigate the need for local regulations. By law, local regulations can only be considered to assure the compatibility of uses and to protect public safety when existing laws do not adequately do so. Although near to the DNR's mission, environment, environmental, habitat, erosion and other concerns cannot be considered in this process. Here's a condensed summary of the process. Upon receiving the official resolution by a local political subdivision, the DNR shall initiate an investigation and inquiry. Part of that process includes conducting a hearing to collect public comments. Upon the completion of the investigation and public hearing, the department will review the pertinent information and provide a recommendation to the local political subdivision. Depending on the request in the resolution, whether it's something specific or just a broad base, we need help. The, of the recommendation, the recommendation may be what was submitted by the local unit of government, no change at all, or the recommendation could be something different. The local political subdivision will then have 60 days to either approve or disapprove any recommendations of change. If approved and a local ordinance is adopted, the language of the ordinance must be identical to the DNR's recommendation. Tonight's hearing is regarding the Charter Township of Bloomfield, Bloomfield's request that the Department of Natural Resources consider establishing an electric motor only and a slow, no wake local watercraft control on several lakes, including Orange Lake now. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested the opportunity to provide information that the DNR can use in determining a recommendation on the township's resolution. Please recognize the DNR can only use the information if it relates to their criteria we are only required to use when making our recommendation. Some of you may simply want to just express, express your support or opposition to the township's request. We are happy to make that note of your position, but please understand that the DNR is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to any restrictions. I believe there was some miscommunication being circulated when this process started regarding the current regulations, the township's request and the process going forward. The township created certain ordinances controlling and regulating watercraft, including prohibiting certain motorized vessels on several lakes, Orange Lake being one. When establishing these ordinances, the township did not have the authority making these ordinances invalid and unenforceable. The township is now trying to establish local controls through the proper process and has requested the DNR to investigate the need for these local controls as described in Part 801. The process for tonight, as you came in this evening, did you, I don't, did you pull the Soden Lake sign and sheet? Okay, go ahead and grab that one and make sure that. So if you're here for the Orange Lake public hearing, please make sure that you sign the Orange Lake sign in, even though you may have been here last time, too. So ditto, ditto, ditto. So when you came in this evening, we request that you sign in. You are also given an opportunity to fill out a public comment sheet. Anyone wishing to comment must fill out a comment sheet and indicate if you wish to make a comment during the hearing or just provide a written comment on the form. We will use these sheets to maintain a record of the people interested in the investigation. Any written comments and to call upon those who would like to speak tonight. To ensure the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. I will call on those who have indicated on the public comment sheet that they would like to speak in the general order in which we receive the sheets. When the individuals who have requested to speak have completed, I will ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. When your name is called, please come to the microphone, face me and make your statement. If you have written comments or materials that you would like to present, please hand them to me as you come to the microphone. As you begin your comment or comments, please state your name and address clearly and any group or association that you may represent. Each person will be given three minutes to make their comments. I will indicate to you or Corporal Lowell will indicate to you when you have 30 seconds left. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end within a lot of time. If needed, I may ask a clarifying question, just so that you know that as well, too. And we'll indicate when your time is up. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Only one person should be speaking at a time. Please do not interrupt a speaker. And please also recognize that we are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed watercraft control and to listen to those comments. The DNR is here to collect additional pertinent information regarding this proposal. This meeting is not an exchange between the individuals providing comments and the DNR. However, again, I may ask a clarifying question. This hearing will be recorded and your comments will be part of the information the DNR may consider in making its recommendation on the township's proposed regulation. The public comment period for this public hearing is open for 30 days after today. You may submit written comments by email, no later than 5:00 PM on December 16th, 2023. Mail comments must be postmarked no later than December 12th, 2023. Additional information and comments may be submitted to, and I've got email addresses here. Those email addresses are back there. I know several of you have those emailed addresses, but there's a DNR shared mailbox, our administrative secretary, as well as myself. So. Following the close of the public comment period, the DNR will provide a recommendation to the township's proposal and submit it to them. The DNR and township officials work together to schedule the public hearings for, or the public hearings for the 10 lakes which were identified in the resolutions for convenience and availability. There will be five tonight, one down. We're on our second one. In the event we do not complete all the public speaking requests, five minutes prior to the start of the next public hearing, the hearing will be temporarily adjourned and we'll start the next meeting on time. We will resume the original hearing later in the evening when time permits. Everyone who wishes to speak will have the opportunity. With that, I will start to call if we have anybody that would like to provide a statement. Cecilia? Or Celia? Celia, I'm sorry. I am bad with names. I apologize to anybody. I am just really bad with names.
I remember my name today. So I live on Orange Lake and I've been there since 1988. So I guess the question is, is Orange Lake allowed to have a 10 mile per hour engine on a boat at all for like fishing? Is it part of our, where'd it go? Is it part, it, I mean, if a neighbor came and bought a, a house on a block and wanted to put a boat on the water to go fishing, can they buy an engine to go on the fishing boat?
Okay. So I'm, I'm going to try to answer your question, but I'm going to answer it kind of politically because this is not an exchange back and forth.
Oh, okay.
But what I can tell you, and I, and I read it, I did read it just a few minutes ago, that the township created some ordinances. Some of them dating back to 1970. Those ordinances were not, they did not have the authority to establish those ordinances. So that, therefore, they are invalid and they are unenforceable. So by state law, the state does not recognize the ordinances on that, on that lake and they are not enforceable.
Okay.
There, I answered your question without really answering it and I just kind of repeated what I said because.
No regulation. Okay, okay. Now, I guess my next question, you're probably going to answer.
Correct.
Snowmobiles. Separate law.
This, yeah, this is about, this is about a local watercraft control establishing the request of the, of the township for recreational purposes for what we call RBS or marine safety.
Okay, okay. Well, I like it quiet. That was, that's it. Thank you.
Are you recording times, Ken?
Yes.
Okay. Good start, start and finish.
How long?
Yep, okay. Martin. Are you interested in, are you, sir, are you, sir, are you interested in speaking?
Regarding Orange Lake?
I didn't know. You just come walking up here. I thought you were getting ready. Oh, no. If, if you want to speak, you're a little bit late. Please sign in in the back. And if you've got, if there's one of these sheets, if you want to fill that out, if you want to speak or if you want to give a written comment, you're more than welcome to do that. That's all. Martin, we'll give you another 30 seconds. How about that? This is. Go ahead. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, good evening. We've heard this before. My name is Martin Brook. I'm the Bloomfield Township clerk. Thanks for being here, gentlemen. I am speaking pursuant to a resolution for the Township Board of Trustees. And we ask the DNR to approve the proposed ordinances. I'll summarize the basis of that request during this verbal public comment and explain in more detail in subsequent written comments. As you know, there are many lakes in the township. Most are quite small. Two lakes are all sports lakes. 10 lakes we are discussing during the next two public days of hearings are presently no motorboat or no internal combustion engine lakes. No motorboat is an easy way of just summarizing that. Eight are under 65 acres and most of those are half that size or smaller. Orange Lake is only 33 acres. Half of that is two feet or less. As for township records, the township records reveal that since the 1950s, residents have wanted these lakes to be motorboat free. As you'll hear, they still do. The fact that a neighborhood agreement, the fact is that is through a neighborhood agreement or ordinance that these small lakes have been non-motorized for 60 years points to approving the proposed ordinances because, as you know, historical uses and lake size are two statutory factors the DNR considers when, when reviewing proposed local controls. Another statutory factor is whether the water body is public or private. This also weighs in favor of the proposed ordinances. The 10 lakes under consideration are all private lakes without public access. DNR approval of the ordinances will not infringe on the right of the general public, nor will it infringe upon the owners who want these rules and/or purchase their homes, fully aware that they would be, live on a quote, "no motorboat" lake. The presence of conflicts, complaints and accidents, and whether the existing law adequately regulates the lakes are four other statutory factors. The lakes are safe and free of complaints, accidents or conflicts precisely because of the longstanding historical expectation and the township ordinance prohibiting motorboating, internal combustion engines. People want to keep it that way, safe and free of conflicts, complaints and accidents. If the DNR does not approve any regulation, the existing law will not adequately regulate activities on the lakes. Under existing state law, outside of 100 feet from shore and over three feet of depth, boats, boats can travel 55 miles per hour. So how far is 100 feet? This boardroom, by the way, is 50 feet wide. 100 feet ring around the lakes, around the larger lakes in question leaves plenty of room for motorboats, jet skis and even wake surfing. It is the same area of the lake where other users want to be. Conflicts will arise. Accidents could happen. In reality, it will only take two or, one or two people on each lake with a jet ski or a wake boat to interfere with all other present uses. Swimmers, stand up paddlers, sailors, kayakers could all be chased off of these small lakes. Bottom line, if the current users don't relinquish the lake to motorboaters, it is likely that conflicts, complaints and accidents will happen because those existing state laws that regulate boating are inadequate. I do have additional notes here, but you have a copy of those and, and so I'll go on to the end here.
Perfect. Thank you.
The Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees request that the DNR approve its proposed ordinance. So these lakes will remain no motorboat, no internal combustion engines, and will also preclude high powered electric motors and/or operation above slow, no wake speeds. I'll provide supporting documentation in subsequent written public comment. Thanks a lot for your consideration.
Sounds real familiar. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on Orange Lake? Okay, sir. If you could, yep. I don't need your comment. If you're giving comments, I don't necessarily, you wish to speak, someone's going to check that out. So, okay. Yep.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for, for coming out. I'm president and have been president of the Orange Lake Lake Board.
Name and address first. Can you stop?
I'm sorry. My name is Barry Barber.
Okay.
3525 Brookside Drive in Bloomfield Township, of course. And as president of the lake, I've been president for 19 years. Know my constituents quite well and I can assure you that they are not in favor of having the lake open to motors or use of motors whatsoever. We like it the way it is and I am very confident I've got the backing of the rest of my constituents to say that. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. I think, Martin, you did a really good job and we'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, I didn't give us time, but that's okay. You got it. So it's all good. I'm going to keep that handy. Okay. Is there anyone else? Last call for Orange Lake that would like to speak? All right. Now you're going to make me find your other form.
Good evening. I did speak at the previous hearing. So my written comment, I would like to go for all of the hearings. Valerie Murray, Bloomfield Township trustee. Just as a boater myself, I totally support the township Just as a boater myself, I totally support the township wanting to allow the local control to keep the lake safe, beautiful, environmentally more protected, and peaceful for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that you think... She's the rebel, I think, because Martin did too. We prefer it that way just so that we don't have to shuffle people...
I've never been called a rule follower before. It's kind of rare for me. I'm Danny Walsh, Bloomfield Township Supervisor. I'll go a little quicker on this one because I assume after you hear it, you'll have it memorized, but Martin already gave you all the stats and you have a resident who's represented this lake for 19 years. And I'd like to point out, even if you can't consider public want, 100% is never something I've ever seen. Living here for 51, my entire life, I've never seen this township come together on 100% of everybody wanting the same thing. Not one person came to speak against this. And again, I plead that the reason that our places are safe and you don't see accidents is because of these ordinances. So, it pleases somebody who has lost a friend's child on Cast Lake, do not let us go to all sports and risk that we lose some of our children because the peace and tranquility of these lakes allows children to swim, adults to swim laps, allows for fishing, allows for everything that they need to coexist together peacefully, safely for so many years. Thank you.
Here we go. Anybody else for Orange Lake that wishes to speak that did not... Okay. With that being said then, this concludes Orange Lake. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Tom Wanless and I'm a lieutenant with the DNR Law Enforcement Division, and I will serve as the hearing officer for this public hearing regarding the resolution passed by the township, the Charter Township of Bloomfield, Oakland County. It is 6:31. We're behind schedule. That's our ass. And this hearing is now in session and it is being recorded. I can't... There we go. With me tonight, on my left, your right, is Corporal Ken Lowell. He will be assisting me, taking notes, and he'll also be the timekeeper. That's what he's doing here. I do not see anyone here from the Sheriff's Department. They were here earlier. What I would like, though, is if we have any individual who's been... Who is an appointed or an elected governmental official, please stand and be recognized by stating your name and your position in government so that you can be recognized, please.
I'm Danny Walsh, Township Supervisor.
I'm Martin Brook, Township Clerk.
Like a showstag, Township Treasurer.
Val Murray, Township Trustee.
Okay. And for those that are just joining us, just so that you know, we've had two of these already, so a lot of this information is being repetitive and we're just trying to shorten things up a little bit, but... Okay. Captain from the Sheriff's Department, Tom Beta, was here earlier today and I'm gonna read a statement from him before I get into the rest of the process here. And what it says is it just says, this is coming from the sheriff, says the sheriff wants the record to reflect that he supports Bloomfield Township's efforts to keep watercraft controls under local control. Watercraft control is best suited by the residents and the community. They should decide what they want and can make their choices appropriately. As the way the lakes are currently designed, there haven't been any issues. There is simply no need to change. By changing the designation from electric only to all sports, it will have an impact on the homeowners and why they specifically purchased their property. Furthermore, if the designation changes, the Oakland County Sheriff's Office will have to be on those lakes to handle boating-related complaints and incidences. So, I just wanted to read that. He was here earlier, made the actual statement, and it's just a statement coming from them. So, that's why I'm sharing it with you tonight. Okay. Little background here. The DNR is responsible for the administration of Part 801, Marine Safety, of Public Act 451, the Natural Resource and Environmental Protection Act, also known as NARA. You may hear that. The Act identifies the DNR as the only entity that can establish additional regulations on the waters of the state for recreational purposes. The Act also provides a process for local political subdivisions to request the DNR to investigate the need for a local regulation. By law, local regulations can only be considered to assure the compatibility of uses and to protect public safety when existing laws cannot adequately do so, although near to the DNR's mission, environmental, habitat, erosion, and other concerns cannot be considered. This is a condensed summary of the process. Upon receiving an official resolution from a local political subdivision, the DNR shall initiate an investigation and inquiry. Part of that process includes conducting a hearing to collect public comment. Upon the completion of the investigation and public hearing, the department will review the pertinent information and provide a recommendation to the local political subdivision. Depending on the request of the resolution, whether it be a specific request or something more broad-based that just says, hey, we need help, the recommendation... I'm sorry. In the resolution, the recommendation may be what was submitted by the local unit of government, no change at all, or something else. The local political subdivision will then have 60 days to approve or disapprove any recommendation of change. If approved and a local ordinance is adopted, the language of the ordinance must be identical to the DNR's recommendation. Tonight's hearing is regarding the Charter Township of Bloomfield's request... Excuse me. That the Department of Natural Resources consider establishing an electric motor only and a slow no-wake local watercraft control on several lakes, including... Want to make sure. Island Lake. That's what we're here for right now. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested an opportunity to provide information that the department can use in determining a recommendation on the township's resolution. Please recognize the DNR can only use the information if it relates to the criteria we are only required to use when making the recommendation. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the township's request. We will be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that the DNR is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether... Or our recommendation, I should say, on whether there is widespread support or opposition to any restriction. I believe there was some miscommunication being circulated when this process started regarding the current regulations, the township's request, and the process going forward. The township created certain ordinances controlling and regulating watercraft, including prohibiting certain motorized vessels on several lakes. Island Lake being one. When establishing these ordinances, the township did not have the authority making these ordinances invalid and unenforceable. The township is now trying to establish local controls through the proper process and has requested the DNR to investigate the need for these controls as prescribed in Part 801. As you came in this evening, or for those that are just coming in right now, we request that you sign in. There should be a sign-in sheet back there specifically for Island Lake. You're also given an opportunity to fill out a public comment sheet. Those are back there as well. Anyone wishing to comment must fill out a comment sheet and indicate if you wish to make a comment during the hearing or just provide a written comment on the form. We will use these sheets to maintain a record of people interested in the investigation, any written comments, and a call upon those who wish to... Who would wish to speak tonight. To ensure the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. I will call on those who have indicated on the public comment sheet that they would like to speak in the general order in which we receive the sheets. When the individuals who requested to speak have completed, I'll ask if anyone else has a comment or statement that they would like to make. When your name is called, please come to the microphone, face me, and make your statement. If you have written comments or materials that you would like to present, please hand them to me as you come to the microphone. As you begin your comments, please state your name and address very clearly in any group or association that you may represent. Each person will be given three minutes to make their comments. I, or Corporal Lowell, will indicate to you when you have 30, around 30 seconds left. Please begin to wrap up your comments and end within the allotted time. If need be, I will indicate when your time has ended, or Corporal Lowell. I ask that we be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Only one person should be speaking at a time. Please do not interrupt a speaker, and please also recognize that we are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed watercraft controls and to listen to those comments, those other comments. The DNR is here to collect additional pertinent information regarding this proposal. This meeting or hearing is not an exchange between the individuals providing the comments and the DNR. However, I may ask a clarifying question. So, moving forward, this hearing is being recorded and your comments will be a part of the information the DNR may consider in making its recommendation on the township's proposed resolution. The public comment period, there'll be a public comment period starting today and it'll run for 30 days. You may submit written comments by email no later than 5:00 PM on December 16, 2023. Mail comments must be postmarked no later than December 12 of 2023. Additional information and comments may be submitted too. And there's a few email addresses back there, and I know several of you already have email addresses. I know the township has email addresses. You can submit them to them. Do not submit anything to Corporal Jill Miller. She is not available, and that's why I'm here tonight conducting this hearing instead of her. So, her email address is on there. You do not need to send that to her. She will not respond in any way, shape, or even see the email. Following the close of the public comment period, the DNR will provide a recommendation on the township's proposal and submit it to them. The DNR and township officials work together to schedule the public hearings for the 10 lakes which were identified in the resolutions for convenience and availability. There will be five hearings tonight. We've got two down. And each will be scheduled for a specific time to start. In the event we have not completed all of the public speaking requests five minutes prior to the start of the next meeting or hearing, the hearing will be temporarily adjourned to start the next meeting. We will resume the original hearing later this evening when time permits. Everyone who wishes to speak will have the opportunity. Just so that you know, there are some snacks back there and some water back there for anybody. That is compliments of the township. Feel free... I'm assuming it's out there, so feel free for it. With that, we have a list here, and I apologize upfront if I mispronounce your name. I don't intend to. I'm just really bad at names. Also, as you are giving your comments, if we are not looking at you, please do not be offended by that. We're making notes. We're looking at documents, so on and so forth. So, please don't take offense to that in any way, shape, or form. Okay.
Unless he wants to speak.
Yeah, no, he will. Yeah, he said he'll speak, but I just saw he walked out. So, all right. So, I've got a list here and we will... Thank you, sir. Start to run through these right now. So, and again, is it Dane? Again, I don't know if it's Dane or Jane, but is it Dane Zellers?
Jane.
Jane? Okay. I apologize. I said I'm bad with names, and I have very poor penmanship, so no one can read anything that I write.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Jane Zellers. I am here representing Kirk in the Hills, which is one of the big landowners on Island Lake. And we, as a representative of Kirk, we are totally in support of the township's efforts to keep that lake free from gas-powered engines or high-powered electric engines. We like the no-wake. And for several reasons, we have out in the summer, we have Sunday outdoor services at 9:00 in the morning. The noise would be detrimental to our outdoor services. We also hold concerts outdoors and indoors. The noise would filter into the building if they were to be have... If there were to be powered motors on the lake. We also hold funeral and interment services outdoors. The noise, once again, would be very disruptive to those services and disrespectful to the people who are mourning their loved ones. We also have a preschool on site. We believe that the noise would be detrimental to the children there. That's all I have to say except that we would like not to see power boats on the lake.
Gary Jones, I believe. I got one right.
Easy one for you. I'm Gary Jones at 1660 Standish. I am a newer resident 12 months ago. I have a unique perspective as that I lived on a all-sports lake in White Lake for nine years prior to coming here. I am in support of having all-sports lakes. I, having lived on that lake, it is a 46-acre lake versus the 111 that I am currently on. Depth-wise, it is six to 10 feet on average, with the middle being about 20-some feet. I can say that even though it is half the size, it has the same amount of residences on it. Both have 70. And from that perspective, I can say that the lake is almost always quiet. There is usually maybe one motorboat on there, typically little to no speedboats. There are typically tubers, which are often children having fun. I am a father of two daughters. I enjoy those kind of type of things. We moved here, we kind of looked forward to that aspect of the lake, having a bigger lake to do those kind of activities on. In that regard as well, from a noise perspective, I'm work from home. When I lived on the other lake, little to no activity during the days, weekdays, weekends, typically little to no activity. And that kind of comes with a private lake versus having the public lakes, which you will often see on weekends that are often busy, especially on holiday weekends. The busiest day on my prior lake was 4th of July, which they held a boat parade, and that was about 10 pontoons typically, some kayakers and some stand-up paddleboarders. I can say too, with the current state law, having stay away 100 feet, paddleboarders and kayakers and canoeers have never had any issue with any of the motorboating or anything like that. So, I thought I wanted to bring my unique perspective to this as I've been living on this lake for 12 months and the other lake and kind of wanted to give that. I am probably in the vocal minority on this based on the previous discussion, but I would just say to the points, and I've read the DNR statement, I've looked at the previous minutes.
30 seconds.
I would just ask the township to provide evidence of the things that they are describing such as the destruction of shorelines or any of those other claims that they have out there. When this originally was put forward, it seemed like it was mostly two complaints of the three reasons on why this was done back in 18 months ago. So, that is it. Thank you.
Did I say it right?
Close. Coonahan.
Coonahan. Okay. I apologize.
No worries. I'm Terry Coonahan. I live at...
Wait, wait till you get to the microphone so they can pick you up, please.
I can speak loudly. I'm Terry Coonahan. I live at 1361 Club Drive. That's Forest Lake, but I am the president for 25 years now of the Island Lower Long and Forest Lake Property Owners Association. And as such, I've got very little to add except to say that I concur completely with the comments of Sheriff Bouchard's office, Clerk Brook, Supervisor Walsh, and just about everybody else in the room except my new neighbor here, Mr. Jones. And I can add a little insight to that because the only additional perspective that I might add is that for the 80s, I lived on Upper Long Lake, which is of course also an all-sports lake. I moved over here to Forest Lake in 1989 specifically to get away from the dangerous environment. I saw boats slip over. I saw a parasailor hit the 60 feet up in a tree, an ultralight crash. There were at least three accidents in neighboring lakes, Pine Lake and Orchard Lake, resulting in fatalities. And I really don't want to go back to that type of an environment, and I was... I'm not old enough to have lived here in Bloomfield Township when it was an all-sports environment and I'm not interested in revisiting something like that. So, I would like the DNR to respectfully commit to maintaining the status quo on our lakes here in Bloomfield Township, including the proposed ban that we're suggesting on speed limits that would also restrict electric motors. With that, I'll say thank you. I appreciate you coming out and best wishes to Corporal Miller.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rod Myers?
Excuse me, thank you for having me, and yes, you did pronounce that absolutely correctly.
Thank you.
Despite my handwriting. Just a few quick, brief comments, and I am clearly a proponent of keeping the status quo of local control, disallowing gasoline and high-speed watercraft. So just, I'll start with that, and then here are my brief comments. I'm not a lawyer, but I would, from what I've learned in the legal world, it would appear to me that the DNR essentially ratified the current lake conditions by way of not taking action in the last 50-plus years. It's, I think, seems to me they either knew or had reason to know that these restrictions were in place and didn't act on it until suddenly. And so there's doctrines in the law that suggest you can ratify by no action. Again, I'm not a lawyer, but that's one thing that crossed my mind. Another comment, if the NR and DNR stands for natural resources, certainly by adding high speeds, high wakes, and greater noise that will disrupt and scare away wildlife is not recommended. So I, that's another opinion of mine, and I realize it's not opinion that's going to make this move, but I just want it for the record. Last comment here, actually, second-to-last comment. By rejecting the township's current lake rules, it would make it much less safe for current boaters and swimmers. Now, clearly, we've heard that from others, and that, to me, is, I don't think an opinion. I think that's probably fact, based on experiences of others here. And the last thing, and it was mentioned, I think Mr. Cooney had just mentioned this, damage to shorelines, or maybe I've got the wrong person that made that comment, my apologies if I do. But I thought about that. The shorelines of the lake, Island Lake, have been adapted over the years to accommodate virtually no wake. And so for that to be suddenly changed, that changes the dynamic of the lake. And I know my shoreline would be adversely affected considerably. I don't have a wall, per se, it's all rather natural, and they would erode, and I think it'd be very detrimental to have high wakes, high waves coming my way if this were to change. And that is all, and thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Did I say it right?
Yes.
Good.
My name is Warren Brandis, and I've lived on Island Lake since 1997. And one of the main reasons we moved here was because we wanted to be on a quiet lake where there wasn't a lot of disturbance from high-speed watercraft. I kayak almost every day. I paddleboard three or four times a week. We have a pontoon boat that's electric. Most people that go out on the lake with pontoon boats go out and float around while the kids swim in the lake and have a good time. Any high-speed craft over 10 miles an hour, in my opinion, would be deplorable on the lake and should be prevented. Gasoline engines do not belong on that lake. The ecology of the lake will be adversely affected, as well as the shoreline, as other people have mentioned. I adamantly against having any high-speed craft on that lake for the reasons that the church representative said and what I just alluded to. Thank you very much.
Thanks. My hand's getting...
Six fifty-four. Six fifty-four. Oh, this is...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how they set it up, so. We were just discussing the timeframe, he thought that we had to shut it down here, but this meeting is actually scheduled, or this hearing is actually scheduled for an hour. Okay, I apologize, is this Satish?
Right here.
Okay. Did I even kind of, I didn't even try your last name.
I've heard every version of it, so.
Satish, Satish?
Yeah, I knew it was me.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Satish.
Satish, I was kind of close.
Yeah, close enough. Satish Tamala, I live on Island Lake, obviously, 1555 Island Lane. And like Terry and Warren, I'm on the Property Owners Association as well, so represent a large number of residents on our lake. Our POA is a little bit unique, because we represent actually three lakes, Lower Long, Forest Lake, and Island Lake. With regards to Island Lake, I think I share the same sentiment that nearly everyone else here has already, has expressed and probably will express, that it's a quiet, tranquil, natural lake. I think people move to the region for these attributes. Agreed whole-handedly with what both Terry and Warren had conveyed, that the speed limit probably is the number-one factor that would probably cure or mitigate a lot of issues with regards to noise, safety, shoreline mitigation, and not disrupt the relative calm nature of that lake. So I'm in support of the 10 mile-per-hour speed limit. I think the rest of the, you know, the rest of the rules, you know, it kind of self-regulates itself. I think most of the owners that live on these lakes are all here for the same kind of tranquil, peaceful demeanor that they offer. I will say with regards to Lower Law, should I represent Lower Law right now, because my house is on both, so.
Right, no, wait, wait.
So I'll come back for that.
If you can wait, yes, please.
Yeah, I'll come back for that.
This is just to focus on Island Lake, thank you.
Yeah, and quite frankly, I think with regards to the gasoline engines, I think it'd be, quite frankly, a pain in the butt anyways. I mean, to go to the gas station and bring, you know, 40 gallons or 50 gallons of fuel and trudge it down your backyard, hoping not to spill it, and then try to, you know, put it into your boat, I think it just becomes a pain in the neck. So in summary, and I represent quite a few homeowners that have emailed me, you know, have their documented emails as well, because they couldn't come here tonight.
Sure.
And most, all are supportive of just maintaining the status quo, tranquil environment, and a 10-mile-per-hour speed limit. Thank you.
Martin, we get to hear from you again, please.
Once again, my name is Martin Brook, I'm the Bloomfield Township Clerk, and I have a statement here pursuant, that actually goes over three minutes, but you've got a copy of it, so I actually might read something slightly different than the prior two hearings.
That's fine.
So pursuant to resolution of the Board of Trustees, we, the Board of Trustees, ask the DNR to approve the proposed ordinances. I'll summarize the basis for that request during this verbal public comment and explain in more detail in a subsequent written comment. Now, there are many lakes in the township. Most are quite small. Two lakes are all-sports lakes. The 10 lakes we are discussing during the next two days of public hearings are presently no motorboat, or no internal combustion engine, or no gasoline. I just use no motorboat as shorthand, lakes. Eight are under 65 acres, and most of those are half the size or smaller. Island Lake is actually 110 acres, with an average depth of only 10 feet. As far as township records reveal, since the 1950s, residents have wanted these lakes to be motorboat-free. As you will hear, they still do. The fact that through a neighborhood agreement, restrictive covenant of some kind, or our township ordinance, valid or not, these small lakes have been non-motorized for over 60 years. That points to approving the proposed ordinance, because, as you know, historical use and lake size are two statutory factors the DNR considers when reviewing proposed lake controls. The presence of conflicts, complaints, and accidents, and whether existing law adequately regulates the lakes are four other statutory factors. The lakes are safe and free of complaints, accidents, or conflicts because of the longstanding historical expectation and the township ordinance prohibiting motorboating. People want to keep it that way, safe and free of conflicts, complaints, and accidents. If the DNR does not approve any regulation, the existing law will not adequately regulate activities on the lakes. Under existing law, outside of 100 feet from shore and three feet of depth, boats can travel 55 miles per hour. So how far is 100 feet? Actually, this boardroom is 50 feet in length, so double this, a small spot. 100-foot ring around the larger lakes in question leaves room for motorboats, jet skis, and even wake surfing, traveling at 55 miles an hour. It is the same area of the lake where other users want to be, swimming off of pontoon boats or kayaking. Conflicts will arise, and accidents could happen. In reality, it would only take one or two people on each lake with a jet ski or a wake boat to interfere with all other present uses. Swimmers, stand-up paddlers, sailors, kayakers could all be chased off the small lakes. Bottom line, if the current users don't relinquish the lake to knit motorboaters, it's likely that conflicts, complaints, and accidents will happen, because the existing state laws that regulate boating are inadequate. And here's my new twist, which I haven't said before. Oakland County Sheriff records, by the way, show that over the past 10 years, 71 accidents have been reported to the Oakland County Sheriff. No doubt, no doubt, there are actually more. Since the pandemic, we have all heard about increased accidents on the highway, but this also appears to be happening on the lakes. In 2022 and 2023, there were 18 accidents, which is the highest two-year period over the past 10 years. In quick summary, to stay with my three minutes, the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees requests the DNR approve its proposed ordinances, so that these lakes will remain no motorboat lakes, no gasoline, and so on, and will also preclude high-powered electric motors and/or operation above slow, no-wake speeds. As indicated before, I'll provide supporting documentation in subsequent public comments, written public comment. Thanks a bunch for your consideration.
He's giving that speech now, for those that haven't been here.
And a small twist.
A little twist, I picked up on it.
Good twist.
He's given that one, so that's great. Okay, is it Bill Moore?
You were on the lower one lake prepared in San Jose.
Oh, you're early, okay, so this is, all right. Thanks for identifying that. Okay, is it Melody Solway? Then you get, I apologize if I'm sorry. Well, I'm assuming you wish to speak. You didn't check it, but I'm guessing that you're wanting to speak.
No, perfect. I will be very grateful, because I did not know I was coming here tonight, and I didn't have very much notice of this hearing, so I've lived on Island Lake for over 30 years. I've really appreciated the quiet, peaceful enjoyment. It's changed my life moving here. And, yes, I'm sorry.
No, can you start with stating your name and your address?
Certainly, I'm sorry, no.
No, my bad, I didn't catch it right when you started, so.
I just jumped right in, so.
You're excited.
Melody Solway, and my husband Alan and I live on 1607 Kirkway, and I've lived in, you know, on Island Lake for over 30 years, and it's been a source of incredible joy, peaceful enjoyment. I've appreciated and been very grateful and chose the area because there were no motorboats, and it was a quiet, electric motor, peaceful, slow, no ecological problems. It was, it is what I really hope will continue. It certainly would be a step in the wrong direction to make any changes to that, and that's really all I came to say. And I think there's people here that agree with me that maybe aren't speaking tonight, but I don't know if it could be put to a vote to the lake owners. I certainly didn't get very much notice about this hearing. I'm not prepared tonight. Obviously, some people really prepared for it, but I would say that, you know, there should be a lot more notice to the residents and a vote be taken before action changing the rules occur. That's my only, I've agreed with all the people that have been, you know, saying let's keep it the status quo for all the reasons, so I just wanted to add my voice.
Okay, and I'm going to add this just so that you know, because I don't know if you caught Milo Spill at the beginning.
No, I'm late, I came late, I didn't know I was coming here.
So, in the back, and I'll say it at the end of this meeting too, in the back, there's email addresses and stuff, and there's a 30-day public comment period. So you said you weren't prepared right here, so you've got 30 days that you can put together any information and send that to us, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Couple more, looks like. Okay, is it Dan Wallen? Darcy Wallen?
Walsh.
Danny Walsh?
Wow, I've been called a lot worse, don't worry.
Well, I'm just looking at the penmanship, and I was going to say almost Darcy, but there's no C in it, it looks like D-A-R-I. It looks like D-A-R-I to me, but again, I'm...
I've been called worse.
Okay, all right.
I'm going to switch it up too.
If I would have put two, I'm just reading names, if I would have put two and two together, I would have said, okay, you would have said dunk, dunk, dong, here she comes again. Here she comes.
I'm going to switch it up this time for you too, because you've already heard that. Again, piggybacking, Martin has already given you a lot of the legal reasons that we feel that we should be able to be heard, but I do have to switch up. I now can't say 100% for the first time ever. Living here for 51 years, this was the 100% I'd ever seen, where everybody agreed. We do now have a new resident, who, so I'm going to go with 99-point-something. They all agree that there's a reason that people move to these lakes, because they're different. They're different, not just because of the noise, or the lack of noise, I should say, with the gas, but the safety. You've heard it already, I've had a friend who lost children on Cass Lake. It is not something I would wish on anybody, and we certainly don't want to be the ones that overturn very safe rules to get an accident, just to go right back to where we are. So we have safe lakes, they're peaceful, they're beautiful, they're one of the one places in Oakland County where you can have children swimming, people just hanging out fishing, and everybody's safe. So I beg you, listen to the people that have responded very, even if they're not here today, they've sent you a lot of letters, I've seen a lot of them, and please just let them have what they all have cherished for so many decades. Thanks.
Now, do you even get to try it this time?
Um...
It's okay.
Shosaski.
Shostak, close.
Shostak, yeah.
Thank you, Lieutenant Walness.
Wanless.
Wanless, okay.
There's a give and take here, it's a give and take.
I am the Bloomfield Township Treasurer, you can find me here at Township Hall. I'm here tonight to support and echo the comments of my constituents, my neighbors, my friends, to maintain local control over these lakes. I will submit further comment, more in-depth in the 30 days, and I thank you for being here and listening to what our township residents have to say. So thank you very much.
Okay, I see other individuals, I do not have any more of these, did anybody come in for Island Lake that wishes to speak?
Yep.
Oh, okay. See, you're the rebel again. You're not, you're not bringing out...
I've never been called the rebel before, so this is funny.
You're not filling out the form, but that's okay.
So, here we go again, Valerie Murray, Bloomfield Township trustee. I am just, I'll mix it up too. I totally support what our Clerk Brook, Clerk Brook has said as a boater and a lake enthusiast for the last 40 years myself, and on an all-sports lake, which I can speak to our one resident that I know would like to keep it an all-sports lake. Island Lake is 110 acres, and I have access to Walnut Lake, which is 233 acres. And in my 40-year personal opinion, it's barely big enough to be an all-sports lake. It is just surrounded by homes, it is all private, we have had deaths, we have had accidents, it is not safe to swim with all the boaters, and with, when the sun is setting, you can't see. We have almost hit people in canoes, because they are in the shadows, or the sun's in your eyes. It's, you have to be extremely careful, even on a lake that size. So, and the residents have spoken, the residents want it quiet, peaceful, and safer, so I am 100% in support of maintaining the local control as the township has recommended. Thank you.
You changed it up a little bit, too.
I'm trying to not be boring, but I got to keep the rebel going.
Right, you can keep the rebel going, but just, and those of us that have been here all night, we, you know, but the other individuals probably would like to hear what, you know, what you have to say too, so please, I mean, I mean, don't hold back, or, wait, let me back up here, because I know you're a rebel, so.
How am I a rebel?
So, don't, you know, so say what you need to say, just so that the other individuals here, the citizens, can also hear that as well, too, so, please.
And I want it to be on the record that I'm in support of the township.
Perfect. Okay, we have another one, Patricia Myers, you wish to speak?
Yes, I do.
All right, come on up, please, and again, I don't know if you came in at the beginning, but when you get up there, just state name and address, I'm sorry.
And address.
Yes, and...
Hi, okay, thank you.
this becomes an issue within the next 30 days, but clearly, if the status changed here on Island Lake, you're gonna affect the ecosystem there, the natural wildlife, you're gonna add gasoline to the lake, and this is something that I suggest has been in place long enough. I'm not convinced yet, after my research, that the DNR still at this point has jurisdiction, wholly apart from that, changing, in fact, when you read the letter that was submitted to all the residents and the responses from the DNR, it's not accurate exactly how the answers are phrased. There is no definition of what an egress or ingress is. What is that? It says in the letter, "There are egress and ingress to the lake," that's not the case. It's all underground, so there's no way that that would be facilitating any kind of commerce or whatever else they were thinking of. Aside from that, I think it would be a terrible thing to do to change the entire living arrangement for the animals and the people that occupy and have occupied that area for years, as have we and my parents-in-law. So, thank you.
Okay, last call for Island Lake, is there? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on Island Lake?
One more here, sir.
If I said it wrong, I'm totally bad. Sunita? Sunita?
Oh, I'm for, sorry, Lower Long Lake, so at 7:30.
Put her with Bill.
Okay, all right, anyone else, last call for Island Lake? Okay, so, I want to thank you for your comments and your cooperation, and we appreciate your interest and that you took the time tonight to be here. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit written comments by email no later than 5:00 PM on December 16th, 2023. Mailed comments must be postmarked no later than December 12th, 2023. Following the close of the public comment period, we will review all pertinent information and submit our recommendation on the requested proposal at a later date. This hearing is now closed, and thank you and have a safe and good evening. Good evening, everyone, my name is Tom Wanless, I'm a lieutenant with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Law Enforcement Division, and I will be serving as the hearing officer for this public hearing regarding the resolution passed by Charter Township of Bloomfield, Oakland County. It is 7:30, right on the nose, we're starting on time, and this hearing is now in session, and just to let you know, it is being recorded. With me tonight, on my left, your right, from the DNR is Corporal Ken Lowell, he will be helping with me, taking some notes and timekeeping. Also, there was a representative from the Sheriff's Department here earlier today, I'm gonna read a statement from the sheriff here in just a few minutes, but also, is there any either elected or appointed officials, governmental officials? If you are here, please stand up, state your name and your position so that you can be recognized, please. Thank you.
She's got a mouthful. She's in my mouth, so, I'm Donnie Steele, I'm the state representative for District 54, which includes half of Bloomfield, Orion, and Auburn Hills, and I am here for maintaining the status quo of what the residents love and get used to as lake owners. I live on a lake as well, and we wanted to maintain, we did this about two months ago in Orion Township on Square Lake, we wanted to maintain the safety and the beauty and what we bought that lake for, which was paddling and kayaking and that type of thing, so I just wanted to encourage the DNR and the residents to maintain that they love and enjoy right now.
Do you? Okay.
Is that what you wanted?
No, I just wanted to know who you were, that's all. I wanted you to give your speech later, so, no, 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 not right now, not right now, not right now, you can, yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to recognize.
I just got a ticket on the way here, so I'm a little bit shy.
Oh, no, great, great.
Wasn't by the DNR, though. Good.
No, I just want to recognize any governmental, any, anybody else in here, I know we have some time, go ahead.
Supervisor Danny Walsh.
And you'll see a little bit of sarc, you'll see a little bit of sarcasm between some of us here, because we've been hearing the same thing from them every meeting, which is, we wanted to do it, we didn't want to just, we told them, "Don't just give your spiel at one meeting, we want you to give it at every meeting," so that the citizens can actually hear, you know, what you are putting forth as well, too. So, that's why they're, they're gonna be speaking as well, too, and you may hear a comment like, "Okay, you're gonna hear this again," or "Ditto," or something like that. It's, it's all in good fun, just so that everybody knows.
Any other elected or appointed officials out there, government? Okay, all right. The DNR is responsible for administering Part 801 Marine Safety Public Act 451, the Natural Resource and Environmental Protection Act. The act ident, you may be, hear that as NARIPA, that word, or that may come up, that abbreviation, NARIPA, that's what it stands for. The act identifies the DNR as the only entity that can establish additional regulations on the waters of this state for recreational purposes. The act also provides a process for local political subdivisions to request the DNR to investigate the need for a local regulation. By law, local regulations can only be considered to assure the compatibility of uses and to protect public safety when existing laws cannot adequately do so, although near to the DNR's mission, environmental, habitat, erosion, and other concerns cannot be considered in this process. Here is a condensed summary of the process, the way that this whole process works that I just referenced. Upon receiving an official resolution from a local political subdivision, the DNR shall initiate the investigation and inquiry. Part of that process includes conducting a hearing to collect public comments. Upon the completion of the investigation and public hearing, the department will review the pertinent information and provide a recommendation to the local political subdivision. Depending on the request in the resolution, whether it's a specific, something specific or broad-based that just says, "Hey, we need help," the recommendation may be what is submitted by the local unit of government, no change at all, or something else. The local political subdivision will then have 60 days to either approve or disapprove any recommendation of change. If approved and a local ordinance is adopted, the language of the ordinance must be identical to the DNR's recommendation. Tonight's hearing is regarding the Charter Township of Bloomfield's request that the Department of Natural Resources consider establishing an electric motor-only and a slow, no-wake local watercraft control on several lakes, Forest Lake being one of them. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested an opportunity to provide information that the DNR can use in determining a recommendation on the township's resolution. Please recognize, the DNR can only use the information if it relates to the criteria that we are only required to use when making our recommendation. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the township's request. We will be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that the DNR is by law not allowed to base our recommendation on whether there is widespread support or opposition to any restrictions. I believe there was some misinformation being circulated when this process started regarding the current regulations, the township's request, and the process going forward. The township created certain ordinances controlling and regulating watercraft, including prohibiting certain motorized vessels on several lakes, including Forest. When establishing these ordinances, the township did not have the authority making these ordinances invalid and unenforceable. The township is now trying to establish local controls through the proper process and has requested the DNR to investigate the need for these local controls as described in Part 801. As you came in this evening, we request that you, that you sign in, there should be a sign-in sheet back there for Forest Lake, please sign in on that. You're also given the opportunity to fill out a public comment sheet, it looks something like that back there. Anyone wishing to comment must fill out a comment sheet and indicate if you wish to make a comment during the hearing or just provide a written comment on the form. We will use these sheets to maintain a record of people interested in the investigation, any written comments, and a call upon those who would like to speak tonight. To ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. I will call those who have indicated on the public comment sheet that they would like to speak in the general order in which we receive them. When the individuals who requested to speak have completed, I will ask if there's anyone else that would like to make a statement. When your name is called, please come up to the microphone, face me, and make your statement. If you have written comments or materials that you would like to present, please hand them to me as you come up to the microphone. As you begin your comments, please state your name and address very clearly and any group or association that you may be representing. Each person will be given three minutes to make your comments. Either I or Corporal Lowell will indicate to you when you have about 30, 30 seconds left. Please begin to wrap up your comments and end within the allotted time. If need be, I will indicate or we will indicate when your time has ended. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Only one person should be speaking at a time. Please do not interrupt a speaker, and please also recognize that we are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed local watercraft control and to listen to those comments, those other comments. The DNR is here to collect additional pertinent information regarding this proposal. This meeting is not an exchange, I should say, this hearing is not an exchange between the individuals providing the comments and the DNR. However, I may ask a clarifying question. How this information is going to be used? This hearing is being recorded, and your comments will be part of the information the DNR may consider in making its recommendation to the township's proposed resolution. The public, there will be a public comment period for this public hearing, it will be open for 30 days from today. You may submit written comments by email no later than 5:00 PM on December 16th, 2023. Mailed comments must be postmarked no later than December 12th, 2023. Additional information or comments may also be submitted to our emails, and we've provided those, and I believe that those are in the back. The one thing that I do ask, unless somebody drew a line through it or scratched it out already, and if you did, okay, is Corporal Jill Miller, you do not, please do not, if you send something to her, there will be absolutely no response, she won't even be able to see it, she is, she'll be off work for a little while, and that's why you're blessed with me here tonight, sarcastic. So, yeah, so don't say anything to her, but you can send it to either our shared mailbox, which I know, I've received a lot of emails, our shared mailbox, my personal, or my work email, or our administrative assistant as well, Dece Rogeski. Following the close of the public comment period, not speaking tonight, but the 30-day period, the DNR will provide a recommendation on the township's proposal and submit it to them. The DNR and township officials work together to schedule the public hearings for the 10 lakes which were identified in the resolutions for convenience and availability. There will be five tonight, this is our third, fourth, this is our fourth, our fourth meeting tonight. They've each been, they, they've each been scheduled for a specific time to start. In the event we have not completed all of the speaking, public speaking requests five minutes prior to the start of the next meeting, we will temporarily adjourn this meeting so that we can start the next meeting. Once that meeting is completed, we will go back and continue with this meeting if need be. Everyone who wishes to speak will have the opportunity to speak. With that, a couple things that I do just want to throw in, this is not written down or anything like that, is when you come up to speak, we may not be looking at you, because we're taking notes, we're looking at paperwork, please don't be offended by that, we're just, we're trying to make comments. This is being recorded, but I also want to make comments as well, too, so, just so that everybody knows that. This is a comment, excuse me, the Captain Tom Vita, or Vita, read at the first public hearing that we had earlier this evening, however, he couldn't stay for all five of the public hearings, so I told him that I would read it so that it is on the record for each one of these public hearings. So, this is coming from the sheriff. The sheriff wants the record to reflect that he supports Bloomfield Township's efforts to keep watercraft controls under local control. Watercraft control is best suited by the residents and the community. They should decide what they want and can make their choices appropriately. As the way the lakes are currently designated, there have been, there haven't been any issues, there is simply no need to change. By changing the designation from electric only to all sports, it will have an impact on the homeowners and why they specifically purchased their property. Furthermore, if the designation changes, the Oakland County Sheriff's Office will have to be on those lakes to handle boating-related complaints and incidences. So, that came from the captain. With that, we'll try it again here, okay, and again, we will do our best here, so I was asked if this individual could go first, Effie Steele?
I am.
Yes, please state name and address.
Hi, I'm Effie Steele, 1387 Club Drive, Bloomfield Hills, 48302, and I am the Forest Lake Reparian Representative. I understand only just now from your previous comments that some of my comment may not be relevant to your decision, but I would like to read it anyway because it's very personal for me.
Absolutely.
So, and may I begin by saying I'm a swimmer. I swim on my lake, okay? My husband and I, like our neighbors, bought our house on this lake because it did not allow gasoline-powered boats and had a no-wake policy. Even though we moved in October, my husband brought out our waterboard and bought a 17-foot canoe. We proceeded to use the lake through November. We swim all summer, we have a pontoon, and all our friends swim, so we are in that lake. I am panicked by the idea that one of my loved family members or friends could be killed or maimed by someone on a jet ski or a big gasoline boat tearing out from the club. We live immediately south of Forest Lake Country Club. This also makes us the shallowest point on the lake where all the blue, all the bluegill nests are. This is a prolific catch-and-release lake. We cannot maintain 100-foot no-wake policy when you allow people to go 50 miles an hour on a 40-acre lake. It is physically impossible. I am a scientist, so I know that. Hence, the nests would be lost, people's safety compromised, and shoreline destroyed. The health of our lake is hanging on by a very delicate balance right now. We already have a dead spot in the middle of the lake due to salt runoff from badly-drained main roads and newly-constructed subdivisions bordering us to the north. We have invasive species that we are harvesting three times during the summer, and algae that we are treating at the beginning of the season in certain areas. There is a golf club on the lake, which is, by law, excluded from the fertilizer restrictions that we have to abide by. Additionally, we are fighting the beginning of a phragmity invasion which is coming our way from the bordering lakes. Adding gasoline and motor oil would further compromise the health of the lake.
30 seconds.
Okay. Corporal Miller did not stop by our weir when she surveyed. The area next to the tuet is eroded, and lake, the lake spills over the road when the lake level cannot be maintained. Any further erosion or compromise of Club Drive could lead to a washout situation as the road acts as a dam. Club Drive is a corduroy- Club Drive is a corduroy road, which is a log road that is laid trackway into perpendicular direction in swampy areas. It is vulnerable. We need more control, not less. As the Department of Natural Resources, we ask you to help us maintain the health of our lake. Please approve Bloomfield Township's ordinance to maintain the prohibition of motorboats and limit electric motors to a slow no-wake speeds and/or ten miles an hour. Thank you.
Thank you.
And those are my photographs of the weir. We have this much land protecting us, the lake, from the road and a possible Midland situation. I want to be on record for this. Thank you.
Donnie Steele, would you like to try it again?
No.
Please. I should probably call you by your title. I apologize.
Thank you. I'm Donnie Steele, representative for District 54, which includes Bloomfield Hills, and I believe that the good residents of this room understand their lake more than anybody, and they should be able to maintain and keep the lake in the status quo in which they have bought and purchased their home. And if the, the no-wake lake is probably the safest for their community, and the lake is probably, from what I just read, is average depth of twenty-two feet, and that would be more conducive to canoes and kayaks and I think, and swimming. And so I think maintaining that type of recreation on this lake is probably the best use of this lake, and so I support their plight for maintaining the lake as it is, which is a no-wake lake. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Got to take a little break here. My hand gets, is it John Phillips? And if I slaughter somebody's name, I truly apologize. I've had a couple today that I was just, I was way out in left field. I apologize upfront.
Well, you did a nice job pronouncing Phillips. You must have one of my screwdrivers.
Two.
As the point's already been made, that people who live around and use Forest Lake, generally as we did, bought the property in reliance on these restrictions. We bought ours in December of 1993. The DNR report suggests that there would be no impact, no adverse impact on safety from allowing the boats that are currently restricted, and they, they don't offer any, any facts to support that. In fact, they would be much less safe. The report indicates what kinds of craft are used on the, on the lake, like paddleboards and canoes, kayaks. They don't mention swimming. They don't mention fishing, but those, those do happen there. They, they don't address the potential damage to the, to the lake shore, which predominantly is natural. They don't mention potential damage to the wetlands at the west side of the lake or the many small islands and waterlands, and waterways, excuse me, and shallow areas. They don't mention injuring or scaring off the many birds and other wildlife that are on the small islands and in the lake or destroying their habitat. They, allowing the kind of boats that have been kept off the lake until now, which is the way we want it, would interfere with normal navigational traffic, not vice versa as the report suggests. And the report acknowledges that the normal navigational traffic is, quote, paddleboards, kayaks, canoes, pontoons, fishing boats with electric motors, and sailboats, and that it's generally slow. If, if we put the kind of boats and other watercraft that are, that are prohibited now, that's going to interfere.
Twenty seconds, sir.
Thank you for the use of that. This is not, this is not something new. It's something that we've had for decades, and we, and we live there because we like it, and we want to keep it that way. Please don't try to take these away because of, of some procedure that was or wasn't followed decades ago.
Thank you. My, my writing is slowing down, so I apologize. Okay. Thank you.
You have a right to slow down.
No, I want to give everybody the opportunity. You sound like my wife now. You need to slow down. Is it Steven, is it Girkin?
Grekken.
Grekken, okay.
Good evening. Steven Grekken, 1350 Lockridge Road. I was the former Riparian representative selected by the township for the last fifteen years. I echo absolutely everything that was said tonight, and I, I think that it begs the question, what's really the purpose, right? So if, if there's a procedural issue, there's always a way to fix a problem, right? So if we haven't done something correctly, we need someone to tell us how to do it correctly. The premise is clear. You heard from the sheriff, you heard from the representative, you heard from the current Riparian. I share the exact same, I share the exact same opinion. The, the rules on the lake are not broken. The procedure for maybe getting there potentially was broken, and, and, you know, Martin and Danny and the lawyers and everybody else, I think with you gentlemen can figure it out. I Googled the Charter of the Michigan DNR, right? And, and I don't have to repeat it to you. You know what it is, and it's to protect the wildlife. I donated fifteen years of, of my time to making sure that the lake was the best it can be. Effie's doing it now. Everybody sitting here has the exact same goal. We can talk for three and a half hours, we can talk for ten and a half hours. The issue really is, somebody needs to tell us what to do. The report is completely erroneous, right? John Phillips told you that. Whoever did this report wasn't looking at looking out for the wildlife, wasn't looking out for the shoreline, wasn't looking out for maintaining the road. This weir is a very fragile situation. We've dealt with the drain commission, we've dealt with the road commission, we've dealt with state representatives, both, both of the state and also of, of the, the regular congresspeople, and said to them, look, there's a problem here, and this whole thing that happened in Midland, disaster, disaster. We don't want to live on some weedy, you know, knoll. We want to live on a lake. So I would implore you to please look at what the problem is and help us get to the right solution, which is, how do we maintain the ordinances that we have? Because they are, in fact, in the best interest of the animals, in the watershed, and of the people who live here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, my name is Martin Brook, I'm the Bloomfield Township clerk, and pursuant to a resolution of the Township Board of Trustees, we ask the DNR to approve the proposed ordinances. I will summarize the basis for that request during this verbal comment and explain in more detail in subsequent written comments, but as an aside, as you know, it is our effort to correct any oversights that may have occurred in 1970 and maintain the status quo in doing so. There are many lakes of the township. Some are small, and all, all of them are quite small, in fact. Two lakes are all sports. Ten lakes that we're discussing during the next two days of public hearings are presently no-motorboat lakes, which is shorthand for no gasoline or no, no internal combustion engines but electric only. Nineteen seventy, that made sense, but today it doesn't so much, which is another reason why we're here asking you for approval of an expansion of our rules. Eight of these lakes are sixty-five acres or less, and half of those are, the sizes are even smaller. As far as township records reveal, since the 1950s, residents have wanted these lakes to be motorboat-free. As you will hear, they still do. The fact that through a neighborhood agreement, restrictive covenants, or an ordinance, valid or not, these small lakes have been non-motorized for over sixty years, points to the, to the fact that they should be approved, or that our ordinance should be approved. As you know, historical use and lake size are two statutory factors the DNR considers when reviewing proposed local controls. And historically, these have been quiet, no motorboat lakes, and they are small. Another statutory factor is whether the water body is public or private. This also weighs in favor of the proposed ordinances. The ten lakes under considerations are all, quote, "private lakes." In other words, they have no public access. The DNR approval of ordinances will not infringe on the right of the general public, nor will it infringe upon the owners who want these rules and or purchase their homes fully aware that they would live on a no-motorboat lake. The presence of conflicts, complaints, and accidents, and whether existing law adequately regulates the lakes are four other statutory factors. The lakes are safe, and they're free of complaints, accidents, or conflicts precisely because of the longstanding historical expectation and the township ordinance prohibiting motorboating. People want to keep it that way, safe and free of conflicts, complaints, and accidents. If the DNR does not approve any regulation, the existing law will not adequately regulate the activities on the lakes. Under existing state law, outside of one hundred feet from shore, if it's over three feet in deep, depth, boats can travel up to fifty-five miles an hour. So, how far is a hundred feet? The boardroom today is fifty feet, so it's not very much. A hundred-foot ring around the larger lakes in question leaves room for motorboats, jet skis, and even wake surfing. It is the same area of the lake where others want to be. Conflicts will arise and accidents will happen. In reality, it will only take one or two people on each lake with a jet ski or a wake boat to interfere with all other present uses. Fishermen, swimmers, stand-up paddlers, sailors, kayakers could be, in fact, chased off of these small lakes. Bottom line, if the current users don't relinquish the lake to the motorboaters, it's likely that conflicts, complaints, and accidents will happen because existing state laws that regulate boating are inadequate. I understand my three minutes are up, and you have the complete written copy of my statement there, as you know. And in summary, the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees requests that the DNR approve the proposed ordinances so that the lakes, these lakes will remain non-motorboat lakes and will also preclude high-powered electric motors and/or operation above slow no-wake speeds. Thanks.
Even though he prepared a, a summary, he's tweaking it each time, which is a good, good thing to do. I mean, that's, you know, and it's based on the comments from, from the general public out here. So that's, no, that's great. Next one, Mike Jacobs?
Hi, I'm from Lower Long Lake.
Okay, this is Lower Long, okay. All right, so we'll stand fast on that one. All right. See, I slaughtered her name before, and we talked about penmanship, but it, I'll say it right this time. Danny, your township supervisor. But she's not paying attention right now.
I was trying to say, what is the second lake? Why does it have Upper Long Lake there?
Yes.
So you're getting me in trouble. I don't need help with that.
All right, so I'll change it up a little, because you're probably sick of us. So Martin is the lawyer who gives you all of the, the serious, important things, and I give you the heart. I've lived here fifty-one years. These lakes have been this way longer than I've been alive, and we haven't had any fatalities. We haven't had the dangers that my friends have faced with their children being killed on Cass Lake. This is something I'm begging you, and so are the residents. The reason there are no problems is because of the rules. So God forbid the rules go away, somebody gets killed, and then we wish they never changed. Please think of the safety when you think of us and the fact that all the people, now I used to say a hundred percent. One gentleman did show up tonight and was against it, so he ruined my batting average, but I still say that anything in this township where even more than fifty-one percent, let alone ninety-nine percent agree, that's huge. And the people who've moved here recently, like that gentleman, knew what they were moving to, so please keep the safety of our lakes. Thank you.
I have one more for Forest Lake. Again, if you came in late, and please sign in in the back, and if you do want to publicly speak on Forest Lake, there are public sheets back there. Please fill it out and bring it up here to Corporal Lowell, if you'd be so kind, so we can call your name. If you have one of these and you do not, for whatever reason, want to give any public speaking at the podium, you can make your comments and just turn them in, and we will, we will carry, carry them the same way. So the last one that I have right now is Tim Marks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a member of Forest Lake Country Club, and I don't think I need to say a whole lot more, this, it hasn't already been said, but I want to make sure we're on record. Forest Lake Country Club is the largest property on the lake, and everything I heard really mirrors exactly what we, what we feel. I'm on the board, so I am a representative of the club tonight, but we're wholeheartedly in support of all the statements that we heard tonight. We as well don't want to see gas-powered boats out there. We do have the boat ramp, so we have interest. We have the boat ramp that the other residents use, as well, we host the harvesting operations. But again, we don't want to see that change. As a matter of fact, the no-wake law is most important to us. So I want to support what I've heard from Mr. Grekken and Effie Steele, as well as the other residents I've known for years. And I want to make this point, too, as well. I am a member of the club, but I live on Upper Long Lake, Upper Long, in Upper Long Lake Estates, not on lake itself. Anyways, I have a gas-powered boat, and I've taken it to these other lakes. I have heard of people taking jet skis and stuff like that back there. The residents in my neighborhood do not want this law changed. Okay, there's, it's an all-sports lake, and we don't want this law changed. We want to maintain those lakes as non-motorized, non-gas-powered lakes as well. A lot of residents go over there for the quietness and the enjoyment and the, the canoeing and kayaking and just the peacefulness and beauty of it. Let's not change that either. So even the non, the motorized people like it the way it is. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir, you might as well come on right up here. You're, you're the next one, so.
My name is Eric Goldberg. I live on 1624 Lockridge. I'm the president of our homeowners association, so I've kind of heard a little bit from everybody, and I can't say that I've heard anybody that wants motorboats right now. I don't want to reiterate everything that everybody else has already said, but I'm a little confused how if you can invalidate an ordinance, why can't they just validate it? I mean, it seems simple. I mean, but the lake is only eleven hundred feet across, and if you had a hundred foot from the shore and a hundred foot from the other shore, and then you need a hundred feet from each boat, there's really no room. Just, it's a little strip, so I don't see that to be safe at all. But, so I want it all electric still. And that's what we signed up for. That's what I purchased my home for. Thank you.
Thank you. You're all right.
I'm Terry Kunahean, 1361 Club Drive.
Terry, can you give me just a second?
Sorry.
Like I said, my, my handwriting's getting slower.
I'm just trying to make this. I'm just trying to make this as brief as I possibly can for everybody.
No, I appreciate it. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Terry Koonahan, 1361 Club Drive, Forest Lake. Also the longtime president of the Island of Lower Long and Forest Lake Property Owners Association. And I really can't say anything else that would add to what has been so eloquently said already by Martin, by Danny, and so many others. We did have one gentleman from Island Lake who was a newcomer, and I got several emails in my capacity from people that maybe I misunderstood what they were saying, but they seemed to be voicing a similar opinion. Nevertheless, in my own personal experience, I lived for eight years before moving over to Forest Lake back in the 80s, and I lived on Upper Long Lake, I'm sorry. And I specifically moved over here, among other reasons, because I felt it was too dangerous, our kids were very young at the time, and witnessed personally too many unhappy situations. So I would implore the DNR to do what it can to maintain the status quo for our lake. And in addition to doing so, add the requested inclusion of high-speed electrics as well. Thank you.
Forest.
I have two proxies that I need to represent for Forest Lake.
Oh, we already did. We're in Forest right now.
We're in Forest.
She wants to do two proxies. That's okay.
Yeah, can speak on the habitable. That's fine.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Sunita Das. I'm representing proxies for two families that backed to Forest Lake. One is Fran and Aaron Martin. They're at 1482 Lockridge Road, Bloomfield Hills, 48302. And I'm just reading verbatim their email that was sent to me. We're not in favor of changing our lake to become a gas-all-sports lake. We purchased our home in 2016. We bought it specifically for an electric boat lake. Environmentally, noise, and protecting a lake from flooding are paramount to us. So just wanted to represent that. And then the other resident backing to Forest Lake is our James Studinger and Chris Replogo. So they've asked me to kindly represent 1546 Indianwood Court with the intention to keep our lakes electric engine-only with wake control. We do not want gas engines or high-speed boats on the lake. Thank you.
Last chance for Forest Lake. Is there anyone that wishes to speak?
Rebel.
It's our rebel. We have a rebel in the township.
Not sure how I got that name, but that's okay. Valerie Murray, Bloomfield Township trustee. So I'm going to change it up on you, so you're not bored. So bottom line is, I support everything that Martin said, that what the residents are saying. It makes sense. It's smart. I am an all-sports lake boater, not in Bloomfield Township. It is dangerous. It does require a lot more space. Forest Lake is 40 acres. And I understand, and I support the DNR, you're doing things to protect, but it's not a one-size-fits-all policy, and that is why wisely the township enacted these policies, whether they were 100% by letter of the law. Can't speak to that, because I didn't live here then, but I think it's very important to respect what the residents want and what's in the best interest of safety. And a 40-acre lake, as the one resident pointed out, is tiny. You can't, and the 55 mile an hour, even if you say, okay, we'll stay all-electric, you can't go 55 miles an hour on my 200-plus acre lake. It's just not even possible to get a boat 55 miles an hour. So that's like saying, let's put 200 miles an hour on the freeway and see if people can get away with it safely, and then wait and see if there's an accident. I think it would be terribly unsafe, let alone all the environmental and ecological issues that follow with that. So I'm, one more time, going to request that you allow the local control, so that the representatives of the township are supported with what they would like, and to keep our lakes safe and clean. Thank you.
You did switch it up a little bit. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for your comments and your cooperation. We appreciate your interest and that you took the time to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of this hearing, you may submit written comments by email no later than 5:00 PM on December 16, 2023. Mail comments must be postmarked no later than December 12 of 2023. Following the close of a 30-day public comment period, we will review, the DNR will review all of the pertinent information and submit our recommendation on the requested proposal on a later date, after that timeframe. This hearing is now closed. I thank you, and have a great night.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Wanless, and I'm a lieutenant. We're starting on time, folks. I'm a lieutenant with the Department of Natural Resources Law Enforcement Division. I'll be serving as the hearing officer for this public hearing regarding the resolution passed by Charter Township of Bloomfield, Oakland County. It is 8:30 on the money, and we are starting on time. This hearing is now in session, and it is being recorded as well. With me tonight, on my left, your right, with the DNR, is Corporal Ken Lowell. He will be assisting. He will also be the timekeeper for the public speaking, and so he'll just be assisting me and taking some notes. I've got a statement here that I'd like to read here in just a few minutes from the sheriff himself. However, and for those that have not been here all night, this is our fifth meeting tonight, and I've asked this every time, and these individuals have had to stand up and identify themselves every time, so it's just something we've been kind of doing here. I ask it right now, any individuals who are appointed or elected governmental officials at any level, please stand up and state your name, as well as your position in government, so you can be recognized.
Hi, I'm Donnie Steele, State Representative for District 54, which includes Bloomfield Township.
And I'm Ian Lawson, county supervisor. Earlier we asked Senator Moss and Shosse Charbonne.
And Martin Broklin, Bloomfield Township.
Any other individuals? Okay.
We did have Michael Shosse there.
Okay. Okay. And if my voice starts to get a little crackly, I'm sorry, I've been reading all night, so I'll do my best here. The DNR is responsible for the administration of Part 801 Marine Safety of Public Act 451, the Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act, also known as NARIPA, you may hear that spoken. The Act identifies the DNR as the only entity that can establish additional regulations on the waters of this state for recreational purposes. The Act also provides a process for local political subdivisions to request the DNR to investigate the need for local regulations. By law, local regulations can only be considered to assure the compatibility of uses and to protect public safety when existing laws cannot adequately do so. Although near to the DNR's mission, environment, habitat, erosion, and other concerns cannot be considered in this process. This is a condensed summary of the process. Upon receiving an official resolution from a local political subdivision, the DNR shall initiate an investigation and inquiry. Part of that process includes conducting a public, or a hearing to conduct public comments, to collect public... Sorry, folks, I apologize. I'm going to try that again. Part of the process includes conducting a hearing to collect public comments. Upon the completion of the investigation and public hearing, the department will review the pertinent information and provide a recommendation to the local political subdivision. Depending on the request in the resolution, whether it's something that's specific, or if it's broad-based that just says, hey, we need help, the recommendation may be what is submitted by the local unit of government. The recommendation could be no change, or the recommendation could be something else. The local political subdivision will then have 60 days to approve or disapprove any recommendation of change. If approved, and a local ordinance is adopted, the language of the ordinance must be identical to the DNR's recommendation. Tonight's hearing is regarding the Charter Township of Bloomfield's request that the Department of Natural Resources consider establishing an electric motor-only and a slow-no-wake local watercraft control on several lakes, including Lower Long Lake. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested an opportunity to provide information that the DNR can use in determining a recommendation on the township's resolution. Please recognize the DNR can only use the information if it relates to the criteria that we are only required to use when making our recommendation. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the township's request. We will be happy to make note of your position, and please understand that the DNR is, by law, not allowed to base our recommendation on whether there is widespread support or opposition to any restrictions. I believe that there was some misinformation being circulated when this process started regarding current regulations, the township's request, and the process going forward. The township created certain ordinances controlling and regulating watercraft, including prohibiting certain motorized vessels on several lakes, Lower Long Lake being one. When establishing these ordinances, the township did not have the authority making these ordinances invalid and unenforceable. The township is now trying to establish local controls through the proper process, and has requested the DNR to investigate the need for these local controls as described in Part 801. So our procedures for tonight, as you came in this evening, and a lot of people were lounging around in the back there, there was a sign-in sheet that looked similar to this. Please make sure that you did sign, even if you're not going to speak, you're just going to be here, please sign into that. All right, sign in. You are also given an opportunity to fill out a public comment sheet. Anyone wishing to comment must fill out a comment sheet and indicate if you wish to make a comment during the hearing, or just provide a written comment on the form. We will use these sheets to maintain a record of people interested in the investigation, any written comments, and to call upon those who would like to speak tonight. To ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. I will call on those who have indicated on the public comment sheet that they would like to speak in the general order in which received them. I've got a stack right here. When the individuals who requested to speak have completed, I will ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. When your name is called, please come up to the microphone at the podium, face me, and make your statement. If you have written comments or materials that you would like to present, please hand them to me on your way up to the microphone. As you begin your comments, please state your name and address very clearly, and any group or association that you may be representing. Each person will be given three minutes to make their comments. I will indicate, or Corporal Lowell will indicate, when you have about 30 seconds left to speak. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end within the allotted time. If need be, I will indicate that your time has expired. I will ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another. Only one person should be speaking at a time. Please do not interrupt the speaker, and please also recognize that we are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed watercraft controls and to listen to the other comments. The DNR is here to collect additional pertinent information regarding this proposal. This hearing is not an exchange between the individuals providing comments and the DNR. However, I may ask a clarifying question. How this information is going to be used? So this hearing is being recorded, as I indicated, and your comments will be a part of the information the DNR may consider in making its recommendation on the township's proposed resolution. The public comment period for this public hearing is open for 30 days after today. You may submit written comments by email no later than 5:00 PM on December 16, 2023. Mail comments must be postmarked no later than December 12 of 2023. Additional information and comments may be submitted, too. So you can send emails, you can send them to, and there's some information in the back with emails in the back. I know several of the individuals have our emails. Got it. Have our emails, there are some emails. If you have Corporal Jill Miller's email, please do not forward any email to her. She will not respond. She will not acknowledge it at this time. She is currently off work for a short period of time. So she will not respond. But you've got, there's a shared mailbox that's floating around out there. I think that's in the back. My email, work email is back there. You raising your hand? Are you...
There were some people that needed some more forms, so he's got some.
No, but I know Martin said that... Okay, perfect. Thank you. So again, email addresses. Following the close of the 30-day public comment period, the DNR will provide a recommendation on the township's proposal and submit it to them. The DNR and township officials work together to schedule the public hearing for these 10 lakes, which are identified in the resolution for convenience. And you know what? I'm going to skip over this, because this is the last meeting, so we will not adjourn this meeting until everybody has had their chance to speak. So I don't need to go into having to temporarily adjourn. So everyone will have an opportunity to speak. With that, there are some snacks floating around back there that is compliments of your township. They provided that. Feel free to have those back there. And another thing that I would like to do before we get started here is just to let you know when you come up and speak, or if you do decide to come up and speak, if we are not looking at you, please do not take offense to it. You'll see that we're writing notes. If you've been here a while, you see that we are trying to write notes, and we're taking notes, and we're timing and stuff like that. So don't take it personally, don't take offense to it. It's not that we're ignoring you, it's that we're trying to capture what you're saying. I understand it's being recorded, but I also want to try to get what I can on paper as well, too. So with that, I would like, earlier today, Captain Tom Vida from the Oakland County Sheriff's Office came here, and he did give a presentation at the very first public hearing that we had, and it is coming from the sheriff. And he had asked, because he couldn't stay here all night, and I said, not a problem. I will read this, so that you can hear, you know, from the representative and from the sheriff's office, so. The sheriff wants the record to reflect that he supports Bloomfield Township's efforts to keep watercraft controls under local control. Watercraft control is best suited by the residents and the community. They should decide what they want and can make their choices appropriately. As the way the lakes are currently designated, there haven't been any issues. There is simply no need to change. By changing the designation from electric-only to all-sports, it will have an impact on the homeowners and why they specifically purchased their property. Furthermore, if the designation changes, the Oakland County Sheriff's Office will have to be on those lakes to handle boating-related complaints and incidences. That's from the sheriff, the sheriff's office, and from the sheriff directly. With that, what I'm going to do, because he's given this presentation four times already tonight, is I'm going to let him go, so that he can finally relax. And so Martin, can you please start with your presentation? Or your comment, I should say, I'm sorry.
Thank you, I appreciate that. My name is Martin Broklin, the Bloomfield Township clerk. Pursuant to resolution from the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees, we ask the DNR to approve the proposed ordinances. I will summarize the basis for that request during my verbal public comment and explain in more detail in subsequent written comments. There are many lakes of the township. Most are quite small. Two lakes are all-sports lakes. The 10 lakes we are discussing during the next two days of public hearings are presently no-motorboat, my shorthand for no gasoline or internal combustion engine. There are no motorboat lakes. Eight of these lakes are 65 acres or less, and most of them are half that size or smaller. As far as township records reveal, since the 1950s, residents have wanted these lakes to be motorboat-free. As you will hear, they still do. The fact that... The fact that through a neighborhood agreement, or restrictive covenant, or ordinance, valid or not, these small lakes have been non-motorized for over 60 years. That fact points to approving the proposed ordinance, because as you know, historical use and lake size are two statutory factors that DNR considers when reviewing proposed local controls." And now, Tom, I'm going to, this is where I'm going to change it up.
Okay.
On a personal note, um, I can, uh, tell you my little, my experience from Lower Long Lake. My grandfather lived in Lower Long Lake in the 60s, and through into the early 70s. And at that time, I used to spend a lot of time in the lake with him fishing. It was a no motorboat or sailboat-only lake at that time, and, uh, we had a little teeny trolling motor that would go out and catch panfish, go through the canals over the forest lake and catch fish over there, and come back, uh, around Sanaa. It was a beautiful lake. It's been, as I, so as I said, I, I know from personal experience that the lake has been for a very long time, ordinance or not, valid or not, uh, a, an ex, uh, a neighborhood gentleman's agreement, you may call it, to have a, uh, be a quiet, slow lake. Another statutory factor is whether the water body is public or private. This also weighs in favor of the proposed ordinances. The 10 lakes under consideration are all private lakes, quote unquote, which means a lake without public access. The DNR approval of the ordinances will not infringe on the right of the general public, nor will infringe upon the owners who want these rules and/or purchased their home fully aware that they would live on a no motorboat lake. The presence of conflicts, complaints, and accidents, and whether the existing law adequately regulates the lakes are four other statutory factors. The lakes are safe and are free of complaints, accidents, or conflicts because of the longstanding historical expectation and the township ordinance prohibiting motorboating. People want to keep it that way, free and safe and free of conflicts, complaints, and accidents. The question is, what's the need for, is there need for local control? The answer to that is a resounding yes. If the DNR does not approve any regulation, uh, or in the related suggestions proposed by the township, existing law will not adequately regulate activities on these lakes. Under existing law, outside of 100 feet from shore, or three foot of, three foot of depth, boats could travel up to 50 miles an hour, 55 miles an hour, in fact. This is within 100-foot ring around these lakes. Lower Long Lake is one of the larger lakes we're discussing, and 100-foot ring around that lake would leave plenty of room for motorboats, jet skis, and even wakesurfing. It is the same area of the lake where others, other users want to be. Conflicts will arise, accidents will happen. In reality, it will only take one or two people on each of these lakes with a jet ski or motorboat to interfere with and prevent all the other present uses, such as fishing, swimming, stand-up paddlers, sailors, kayakers, and so forth. Um, I'll, um, in respect of my three minutes, I'm certain I'm past, uh, I'm going to move to the end and just reiterate that the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees requests that the DNR approve its proposed ordinances, so that these lakes will remain no motorboat lakes, and will be, and also preclude high-powered electric motors and/or operation above slow no-wake speeds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now you can relax. He's read that, or said that, um, five times, and, um, slightly different every time, and, and, you know, originally, you know, and what you'll see is your township officials were, are going to come up here and make statements, and they've made a statement at every single, uh, public hearing that we've had tonight. This is the fifth one, and we, I've wanted them to do that, not so much so that I can hear it five times and so, so I can see if they, you know, say something differently, but it's so that you, the citizens, can also hear what your township officials are, are, are saying, what they put together for you. So, um, that's, that's the reason why we're, that's part of the reason why we're doing it, also because it is a separate public hearing. So with that, SK, I'm going to let you jump up here, um, and if you would like to bring your bride with you, um, feel free.
All right. Good evening, and, uh, thank you for your patience. A fifth hearing, so that, that's a big one. Uh, Daviani and I have been on Lower Long Lake for the last seven years, and, uh, the only reason we bought that house and built that house was because there are no motorized boats, and we thought the city actually had mandated it. Um, whether they, whether it was a law or not a law is sort of irrelevant at this point because, because, but most important, why I'm here is, I'm a first-generation immigrant, and this is, this is amazing. The dialogue between citizens and the law, just allowing that dialogue of for or against is very, very, very good. What is not amazing, two things which I want to bring out, is a report the DNR wrote, which seems, uh, seems strange, where there would be no accidents in a very small lake, nothing would happen to the ecology, and for 60 years, there's 99% people who've been staying here for 60 years and respecting the law and maintaining, there's a reason we bought our homes here. Uh, there, in, in the third world, there are thugs who come in, politicians, and, uh, sorry about that, lawyers, lawyers, who come in and change, change, change the law, and, and then people who've been living peacefully and maintaining, you know, for law and order for 60 years, boom, it's changed because some guy found a loophole. The smell test doesn't pass, the common sense doesn't pass. It, it, you need to, the DNR needs to essentially look at this in a very objective manner and keep, uh, exactly where we are and not allow any wakes. Thank you for your time.
I'm putting SK on here. Yeah, that's fine. Yep, that's fine. Oh, whoops, I'm sorry, I wasn't. Okay, and I know I slaughtered your name last time, uh, and I'm slaughtered again. I apologize. Uh, Satishah?
Oh, Satish.
Satish? I knew I was going to do it.
No, I knew it was me.
I, I, I knew I was going to do it, and I just, I'm like, okay, this is gonna...
Satish Tamala.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, 1555 Island Lane, um, my property is a little bit unique because my backyard is on Island Lake, and across the street, my front yard is on Lower Long Lake, so I have access to both, which is kind of cool. I will say, and I've been on the POA board for almost 10 years now, I think everyone has moved to this region for the same, uh, with the same idea of the tranquility, relative tranquility, um, nature, quiet. And, uh, we heard a member of the church, uh, from the, uh, Kirk in the Hills, uh, earlier speak about how they have Sunday services on the lake, weddings, um, special events, and how gasoline engines and, um, loud, high-speed, uh, activity would kind of, uh, kill that whole vibe. And I think the status quo works, and I think that's generally what the overall consensus is, is that, uh, you know, these lakes, the residents on these lakes, they kind of self-police themselves. Um, you know, that's why it's quite safe where we are, we don't have any accidents, and a lot of that's because of the regulations that we currently kind of abide by already. Uh, I would say that, um, we probably need some better signage, because Lower Long Lake is, uh, quite unique, that it's connected to an all-sports lake with a channel, and there used to be some vague signage from Upper Long to Lower Long. Uh, we need to probably make it quite clear that there is a, uh, restriction with gasoline engines entering Lower Long from Upper Long, as well as the slow no-wake, um, you know, speeds that, uh, Martin had pointed out earlier. Uh, that's it.
Thank you. Arbart Sangal, if I said it right? If I didn't, I'd give, I s, I apologize to everybody up front if I slaughtered your name, even if it's a common name.
That was perfect.
Thank you.
Anyway, Arbart Sangal, 1370 Kirkway Road, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan 48302. Um, so the first thing I want to say is Lieutenant, Lieutenant Wallace, Corporal Miller writes that the lakes are connected to, or something like that, the Rouge River. Uh, if I didn't know anything about this, these bodies of water, I would assume that to mean that you can navigate from the lakes to the Rouge River. You cannot. There's a road in between. Um, we, we live on the lake, we bought on the lake because the lake has been electric only for decades. I remember before electric boats became a rage, uh, you could Google electric boat, and a picture used to come up of an electric boat on Lower Long Lake from the 1930s. So history is important, but so is safety, and I wrote a lot of things on my pub, my comment, and you've told me that none of that matters because really what matters is safety, so let's talk about safety. I'm, I'm a pretty self-confident person, but I will tell you something embarrassing. I'm afraid of water. I get panicky in water easily. I have, I, I'm an, I learned to swim as an adult, and being a confident person, I force myself to do things that I'm afraid of because I'm not going to let it beat me. I've swam across Pine Lake, and I've swam across Lower Long Lake. Swimming across Pine Lake was an organized event by Pine Lake Country Club, so traffic had been pretty much stopped, but there were gasoline boats running alongside the swimmers. I was dead last, swimming slowly. A gasoline boat comes up to me, says, "Hey, do you need a ride?" I said, "No." I'll go at my speed, I'll make it. Takes off. Gas fumes come at me, I start panicking. Then the wake hits me, goes over my head, I think I'm going to drown. My wife was with me, she wasn't going to leave me. I made it fine, but it was, it was not safe. I've swam across Lower Long Lake, no problem. There's no wake. It's easy to swim. We have two paddleboards, two kayaks, and an electric pontoon boat. I can take the paddleboard out on Lower Long Lake. You make Lower Long Lake a gas-engine lake, a wake lake. It's no longer safe for me or people like me to swim or paddleboard or use that lake like we do now. So please, keep it electric, keep it low speeds. Thank you.
Terry, are you still here? Yep. I thought you said you were, I thought you said you were going to take off, so I...
Oh, you want me to?
No, no, I, you're here, you might as well speak.
We're all getting tired of hearing you anyway.
No.
Terry Cunahan, 1361 Club Drive. I'm the longtime president of the Island, Lower Long, and Forest Lake Property Owners Association, and I, for the sake of brevity, I'd just say, I'd like to echo just about everything that's been said here tonight, and so well by so many people. Uh, and I want to add one thing. Forget about my experiences over on Upper Long Lake for a minute, but I would like to point out that proximity of Lower Long to Upper Long Lake is, is very problematic if we were to open this up to gasoline engines. It would change way more dramatically on Upper Long, I'm sorry, on Lower Long Lake as a result of something like that than I think most people realize. Having lived over on Upper Long, it's grossly overused and overpopulated. I hope there's no one here, did Tim Marks leave? Okay, so I'm, I'm safe then in making these comments, but it would change dramatically, and to a lesser extent because of the access ways to where I live on Forest Lake, we'd be affected as well. So I'd like that to, uh, to be taken into consideration as well. And again, please, uh, it'd be great if the DNR could see its way fit to continue to maintain the current, uh, ordinances that are in place and to simply expand them to include high-speed electrics as well. Thank you.
Uh, next one, Maureen, is it Human, or is it Hammond?
Good evening. I'm Maureen Hammond, and my husband and I and three teens live at 1497 Lockridge Road. And in an effort to address the safety concerns, um, I'm requesting you please consider the following information and my questions, because I don't, I don't know, I don't have all the answers. Um, but being, I think we're the largest lake of the lakes being discussed tonight, um, in depth and surface area. Is it considered all the shallow areas and weedy areas, is that taken into account, like unnavigitable, um, acres when determining like the carrying capacity of our lake? I don't know, so I'm asking, um, how many usable acres are needed to maintain safety? Um, the boats today are much faster and have many more features, making it necessary to have more acres per boat, and I'm assuming all that's taken into consideration when determining, um, how safe our lake would be if it, if it were to go to motorboat lakes? Um, I'm nervous because being that we are the largest lake of the connected lakes, like the gentleman just said, um, we would draw a lot of traffic from Forest Lake and Upper Long Lake, and do we know the expected watercraft, um, census that would bring to our, um, to Lower Long Lake? So that's all, I just want to make sure that's being considered. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'm glad that you actually wrote those questions out on here as well, too, so that I didn't have to sit there and write so fast, I gave my hand a little bit of time to rest, so thank you for that. Oh, and did you say you had three children? Okay, I just, I was making a note. Okay, thank you. And Mike, before you start, I just want to share this because a couple of people have asked me this throughout the night. Um, the reason why we're having five, actually 10 different public hearings is because each one of these lakes is being treated separately. So recommendation moving forward, uh, I mean, they could end up all being the same recommendation, whatever it is, but they could be a little bit different as well. I mean, we could say Lake A, no blue boats, uh, Lake B, no boating on Thursday. I mean, so they could be, they could be different. So that's why we're holding separate hearings, and so, and that's why we're taking public comment from, or for each of these, uh, lakes or the resolutions, and that's why I actually had the township officials as well as read the sheriffs, uh, for each hearing, so that we, um, so that it was on record. Okay? Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Mike Jacobs, I'm representing myself and also my wife Alyssa from 1411 Lockridge. Um, the, um, we own roughly 1,700-foot of waterfrontage, which also includes half of an island, and we are centered in the center of the lake, and we face the straits of Lower Long Lake, which can't be more than a football field in length. So, um, part of that island also houses, uh, swan nesting, and there's a lot of fish reaction that takes place in that region naturally. Um, having grown up on the Saginaw Bay myself and spent most of my life on the water in all-sports scenarios, we chose to move to the lake because of its serenity, beauty, sunsets, safe water access, waterfowl, fishing, and also the wildlife that's centered around it. It's ubiquitous, it's everywhere. So we absolutely love it. The, um, I had to give up access to a float plane. I gave access, gave up access to a powered boat to move to that lake. So these are things dear to me. Um, the, I'm, we are both concerned about the, the, the safety of the lake, not just, uh, not just human safety, but, um, natural resource safety, waterfowl, uh, animals, critters. We watch the deer swim across the lake from our point several times a year. It's quite fascinating. I never thought deer could swim, actually. Um, a couple of concerns that we have, and I'd wish that you would consider in, uh, taking these things into account. On, on the peninsula where we live, the vast majority of the land around us is less than five feet deep, up to at least 50, in some cases, 100 feet from our house. And the deeper part of the lake is right in the center of the strait. Um, it's not amenable to really speedboating, uh, it's not amenable to wake boats, it's not amenable to high-powered electric boats. It's, it's just not safe. As a surgeon, as a chair of a surgery department, as someone who runs the trauma section for, uh, as the chair, it is simply unsafe to have a high-powered boat on that lake, or a snowmobile, or sadly enough, even a float plane. Um, so I wish that you... you would consider that and I think that concludes my comments thanks for your time
thank you thank you okay and I know I'm gonna slaughter her name as well or yeah okay I'm gonna say it wrong I've I've said it wrong I think once or twice already tonight Sunita
you said it absolutely perfect
don't ask me say it again in five minutes
hi Sunita Das I I live on 1551 Lockridge Road we back to lower long lake and we also have the wetlands as part of our property and I cannot even tell you how beautiful the lake is the the vibrant and thriving ecological environment that we have in our backyard we're extremely fortunate to have that and when I you know the first thing in in preparing to come to this meeting I said what's the mission of the DNR and and I look at your mission statement and it says it's committed to the conservation protection management and use of these natural resources I echo pretty much everyone's sentiments I think we're all kind of in concert thinking the same way so I I implore you to take that into account keep the environment steady and safe as it is it feels like it's teeter tottering as well I feel like we're we're on the edge with with all the fertilizers flowing into the water there's already a lot of distress to the lake ecological system here so if you could take that into account and keep it as is that's all I ask
thank you thank you Bill and I know I slaughtered your your name again last time that you spoke is it Bill Muir
Muir
Muir okay see I slaughtered it again
thank you I'm Bill Muir I live at 1275 Club Drive and I thank you for being here Lieutenant Corporal yeah I got here early so I could hear the the island lake and the Forest Lake comments so I've been here for like two hours and over the course of time I've become a little bit more incredulous about the situation and the fact that you know myself and my neighbors have to address this issue that is really in existence only because of a bureaucratic procedural issue with the DNR makes absolutely no sense and we have to respond to a DNR report that makes absolutely no sense it's it's I don't know who wrote it or what they were thinking but I can tell you what you know what I do want and what I don't want what I do want is to maintain the status quo like everybody else that I've heard speak except for the one gentleman when we moved from the other side of Bloomfield Township to where we live 15 years ago was because of the it was because of the no motor lake the environment the peace you know and I understand that the environment doesn't seem to matter you know with the DNR as it relates to the situation but it's very important to us the animals that live on our property are surrounding they're beautiful they're part of our family we worry about it what might happen to them but let me tell you what I don't want to have happen what I don't want to have happen is what happened on Sylvan Lake 10 years ago when two young girls were being towed by their father on a jet ski and were run over by a speeding motorboat and killed apparently safety does matter and that I would say is the primary concern that myself and my family has my adult children my grandchildren we kayak we fish we swim constantly in the lake and I'm scared to death of what's gonna happen if you allow our lake to become an all-sports lake so I I plead with you to take that safety into consideration and I also hope that you put some time and effort into producing something that actually makes sense okay I think we deserve it as taxpayers and I hope you can do a better job than what you've done so far thank you
thank you
I've got so much excitement you don't want to hear this five times
you want to give it five times we'll listen to
I haven't done it the same every time in fact I'm gonna I'm gonna say something you said we can't talk about I'm gonna talk about beauty
no
I'm talking about animals no I'm kidding
clarify the record I've never said we cannot we cannot you can talk about anything that you want as long as it pertains to this
I know I'm just messing it's been since 5:30 we've been together now so I feel like we
we're bonding
so Danny Walsh Township Supervisor before I get into the safety discussion that you've listened to there is something to be said about the beauty and the animals and everything because as someone who's only been on public lakes my whole life I although I live on Wing Lake Road I don't live on the lake I had never fully experienced what a true private lake to us means until 2022 the riparian current riparian of Forest Lake invited me to see what it is that they're protecting because as representatives we'll protect you but if we really fully understand what we're protecting boy can we be a lot more passionate what you saw tonight so she took me on Forest Lake which I had never in my life seen quiet enough to hear the kids laughing playing over by their play area in the water to see people fishing and to see someone on a pontoon having fun and be able to actually hear and wave and talk never in my life all I usually hear is so to me I was like oh my god this is a utopian society I've never fully experienced even better as we're slowly moving to the point that you made tonight first of all that is super brave and that is amazing what you shared tonight because I saw what you normally get to deal with there was a swimmer who had no fear because there was just slow-moving boats that is something that I don't want taken for granted tonight so seeing this utopian society then we got to cross into long lake because they are connected and again I've never seen such a large lake so peaceful and beautiful but even more it's safe and as you know I've shared that I have a friend who lost a child on a public lake and it was some that'll never go away so this lake has been these lakes have been safe I've been here 51 years my whole life these are older than me there's few things that are older than me in this area but these these have been safe lakes for that long for a reason please don't get rid of this and have an accident and then wish we'd never made a change so please protect the safety thank you
just one point of clarification can you repeat the noise of that motorboat again
I kinda like you now we had a little rough start not kidding
thank you
thank you thank you for allowing me to be here tonight I'm Donnie Steele state rep for Bloomfield Township and I believe the best control of government is local control and I am a state representative however I was first my house which is you want to be in control and then part of an HOA which I was very active in and a local township Orient Township and now I'm at the state in every level of government you lose autonomy and that's what we don't want to lose is our autonomy and I am also a lake owner and I have lived on an all-sports lake and your accuracy of the noise is true but that's a choice of a recreation that you choose you choose to be on a boat go fast tube jet ski and then now right now I live on a no it is also a electric motor only and we are going through the process of making it into a no-wake lake for the same reason and I have chosen to live on that lake for a different type of recreation that I bought for that type of recreation in which I want to maintain so I'm just going back to the local control I found that the best form of government is within your local environment you are closest to the situation and you can make the best choices on behalf of your local control and so that's what I am here to support with most everybody else in this room thank you
thank you see this is a different group here tonight because the first four for those that were here earlier no one applauded or anything after that and I'm not saying you can't I'm not saying you can't or anything like that it's just no one did it came up
you opened your speech by the end
yeah exactly I know and that's the thing those that have spoke multiple times it's they've tweaked it a little bit you know and it's gotten better and they've gotten more dynamic up there with you know vroom noises and all that other stuff so
that was just for you
it's folks it's it's all good you know we're
you too are opening up to yourself
it's a long night it's a long night I don't know I think I've been like this the whole night but that's hey we'll make it happen okay next individual please is it David Cooper and then I see I have a Carrie Cooper if you are in any way shape related you do live at the same house you can speak differently or separately so yeah yep yeah they you can you can
you want six minutes is that what you said
yep yep you can go up there if you want or you can stay down have your own three minutes
I'll start up
let her go by herself go ahead sir
yeah she can speak for herself
perfect go ahead
I live at 3790 West Pemberton on lower long lake and I would just I'd like to just observe what the use of the lake has evolved to be the habitual use of lower long lake is a lot of swimming paddleboarding floating around on pontoon boats and swimming off the pontoon boats there's no navigation per se any 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 talk of in this DNR report I saw something about navigation it's it's not that someone needs to get from point A to point B on these lakes it's not this isn't a this isn't part of the the equation here so this kind of use has developed organically or naturally over the past 50 years for whatever reasons people have abided by not putting speedboats on these lakes as far as I know until recently there hasn't been any serious contesting of the agreement that we've had in the township to keep the lakes low-speed electric and so on my per and I've you know I'll talk a little bit my personal use of the lake which is one example but I also bring family friends I've met friends on the sidewalk next to the lake when I'm going down there and brought them out for boat rides one of them I guess isn't here tonight he was gonna be here but again swimming I do a lot of swimming swimming clear across lower long lake can't do that I do I do activities out there that specifically are done because there are no powerboats out there so swimming all the way across the lake floating around on a pontoon boat with a laptop working making it into my office out there yoga on the paddleboard paddleboarding around the lake so the so there's a there's a long list of activities very compatible activities that are going on right now I'll leave I'll leave it to to my lovely wife
thank you
my name's Kai Kai Cooper so I agree with everybody tonight but I just want to come up to say about my personal experience so I paddleboard almost every day I watch sunrise and even last weekend 30 degrees I was on the paddleboard for three hours so I love it that's kind of like my therapy you know again I'm not a swimmer I really I just learned how to swim two years ago in the swimming pool and the past summer I learned how to swim in the lake I started some lessons I said hey I paddleboard every day so I better know how to swim but the reason I can go out to paddleboard because there's no wake I know there's unless animal attacked me okay nobody else no you know powerboat no big wake can really scare me so I do around all the lakes sometimes couple times one time was paddleboard one time was kayaking upper long lake so I love going through that marsh areas you know so get to the upper long lake so they have powerboat there and then they do water ski really I felt I'm gonna die over there because the wake I feel like they're going to throw me off the board off the kayak you know so that is the safety concern I had over there so I said oh tell myself oh never go back there again so right now really just the lower long lake and also Forest Lake I I know everybody here cares about animals I do too so every morning I go up there I I feel like I was chasing them because blue herring was there when I get there just on the paddleboard quietly they saw me they were flew away I see bob eagles I see thears in the water you know I see all kinds of things green herring all kinds of animals and they're scared whenever I pass by so now I'm just thinking the noise from the powerboat is really really gonna scare them away and I care about them I think everybody cares about them you know just that's just my opinion so I totally support the township ordinance and no-wake policy thank you
okay did you okay yep yep all right that's fine perfect so Mike Vlasic and Helen Vlasic we 1211 Club Drive lower long lake so we lived in lower long lake for 36 years we are taught our kids how to sail and swim paddleboard on the lake I'm on the POA board and I'm also the riparian representative on the lake board and so I almost every homeowner that has bought on the lake since then calls me before they buy the house because they want to understand the restrictions so I've literally spoken to everybody that lives on a lower long lake and I can say no one has bought there that didn't want this environment this is they were specifically looking for the environment that they were gonna get slow speeds electric motors the ability to paddleboard sail and so I just support you know the continued ordinance from the township and and I think that the harm would be the reverse almost everybody that lives on lower long lake with due respect could live on any other lake in Oakland County and they chose specifically chose to live on a non-all-sports lake and and there aren't very many of them left and so I think it's really important to respect the wishes of the homeowners that have worked so hard to to get to this place
I just wanted to say that we enjoy the lake a lot and probably in the summertime I admire Kai who went out last week but we're probably out there five or six nights a week and we mostly paddleboard and I'm I'm a rower I skull and I don't think if it if we had motorboats I would skull because it's the boat is only this deep and I row backwards and so I I have to turn around but with the speeds of motorboats I would not feel safe and plus the wakes would swamp me and I'm too old for that so anyway I we both encourage you to support the township ordinance
thank you
thank you
Good evening.
My name is Pamela Miller. I live at 3792 West Pemberton Road. And I also am in support of the township's ordinance. It's like everybody seemingly here tonight. We actually don't live on the lake. We live a block behind it and we have two lake parcels that are, are right there that we walk over to. So we just acquired them a couple of years ago and it has been a longtime dream of mine to get on that lake for the very reasons that you're hearing here tonight, right? Because it's safe, because it's quiet, because it's beautiful, because it's peaceful. I have, you know, two little boys who are 10 and 12 right now. We want a lake all the time. We are constantly out there, they're fishing, we're kayaking, we're on the paddleboards. We have a pontoon boat that we have out there as well, you know, to allow gas, gas boats or, you know, high speed wake boats would fundamentally change everybody's use of the lake. Our, our use of the lake would drastically change. Currently, you know, I'll take my boys out there in the summer and I'll put them on a tube and I'll tow them behind our, our pontoon boat. Now, mind you, we're going at one mile per hour, but like the kids love it. They have so much fun and inevitably they fall off because they're joking around and like, we're not panicked, you know, because they're floating in the middle of the lake, right? We're not worried about some sort of boat coming and running them over or, you know, circling back to them right away, right? We're leisurely going back there as they're laughing and having fun because we know that they're safe. You know, if, if you allowed gas boats or, you know, these high speed wake boats, that would, you know, change completely. You know, when we have our friends out there and their kids, we say the same thing, like, how lucky are we that we live on this lake where it's so safe, so safe for us, so safe for our kids, you know? And it's incredible, like you've heard the people here today, people swim across that lake all the time. You know, we'll be out there on the boat and somebody's just randomly swimming across it with no concerns, no fear in the world of, you know, getting run over by some other boat. And we even joke that, you know, with the way the lake is currently used, you could swim out of the way of a boat before that boat's going to come hit you, right? Because the boats out there are so slow. But, you know, that's what makes it so wonderful and so perfect, right? And that's what we're, you know, definitely want to, want to keep. And like Danny mentioned, you know, we've gone up to Upper Long Lake before and we've turned around because we hear those noises from, I mean, as soon as you go through the canals, you can hear those motorboats going. And we, you know, stopped and we've turned around and we're like, nah, I don't think we're going to go up there, you know? It's going to be too busy. It's going to be too loud, too noisy. You know, there's absolutely no reason to do that. And, you know, we've had plenty of nights when we're out there where actually people from Upper Long Lake will come out there with their little electric trawlers and they'll be on Lower Long Lake specifically because they want to be on a lake where it's peaceful, where it's quiet, where they can go off and they can swim without having to worry about motorboats. So they're constantly coming down there as well. So I urge you to, you know, keep the ordinance as it should be, as Bloomfield's proposing, and to disallow any sort of gas powered boats or high speed wake boats on our lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Just to, where'd you go? Okay, there you are. Just, okay, I just wanted, in the, in the beginning, you, you don't live on the lake, but you now own two parcels on the lake?
So the lake itself, you know, it has lots of homes on it, but there's a strip that has just parcels where there are no homes, but it's basically like the size of a parking lot, spot. Yeah.
Yeah. But is, is it exclusively yours or is it part of an association? Okay, okay, that, that's, okay. Yep. And you want two of those? Are they side by side?
They are.
Okay. Thank you. Wow. Michael Keef? If I pronounced Keef right?
Correct.
Perfect.
I'm one of the old guys on this lake. We've lived here for more than 45 years. We moved here primarily because it was a quiet, safe lake. I raised my daughters here, my grandkids swim here. I now look out and enjoy kids swimming out in the middle of the lake. Although the, the lake is a great in surface area, I've been told, but if you look at it, it's quite long, but not necessarily that wide. So if powerboats are allowed to, I guess, run up and down the lake, I think that poses a serious, severe danger to people that are swimming or whatever out there. I support everybody that has talked today. I don't, can't think of anything more to say than I've, than they've said, but I continue to support the, what's going on in the, and I don't want anything to change on our lake.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, this is the last one I have here. I believe it is, I'm going to pronounce the last, I think it's Dick, is it? Rap, rest, I don't know. Is there a gentleman by the name of Dick here? Can you pronounce your last name? Well, you'll, you'll, you'll say it up there. That's fine. That's fine. But
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dick Rapley. I'm on 1307 Porter's Lane on Lower Long Lake. I had a commitment earlier this evening, so I was late. I didn't hear a lot of this, but I'm so glad to be here and to hear this because that's why I came. I just, you've got to hear this. My wife looked long and hard for a house and we, we, we got it about 10 years ago. She was ill and the last couple of years, she couldn't leave the house without oxygen. So her whole world was here. I was so blessed and so thankful that we were there that she could look out and see the swans and the animals and the change. It's unique. It's, it's something we bought the house for. And I, I, I just can't imagine, as the people here have told you, what, what it would be like. Now, we get a lot of people I would think who would want to move and I would probably be one of them. But again, we bought the house for that reason and I, I would feel, please hear everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I do not have any more sheets up here for public comment speaking. Is there any? Is there anybody out there else who would like to provide a? Yes, yes. Some of us are paying attention. Okay. I'm just saying. Yeah. So is there? Okay. Can you grab one of those sheets back there? Just, or you don't need to put comments in there, just, just, just for the record. And you can actually, you know what? This is what I'm going to do is I'm going to let you fill that out here real quick and we'll let you go. I was going to try to ignore you, but you know, I can't, so.
So Valerie Murray, trustee, sorry for the fifth time, but I wanted to speak in support of every lake that you covered tonight. This is one of the larger lakes. As a all sports lake user myself, I don't live on the lake, but I can tell you a mile away, I can hear some of the boats from my house. We do not go out in the busy part of the Saturday and Sunday afternoon because it is dangerous. We ski and I've had, you know, I was driving the boat one time and my husband fell and some yahoos coming up behind me. I got three little boys on the boat and I'm like, don't look at me. I'm turning around. I'm like, he's in the water. And I'm literally just like gyrating with my arms and I'm thinking, they see the boat turning around. Do they see that he's in the water? And he's holding up a ski and I can't tell you, it's, so we just said, no, we will do it at the end of the day or earlier in the day. It's dangerous. We love it. It's dangerous. Hearing everyone speak, and I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and the two of you for staying with us for all these hours. The passion, the love, the reason they bought, the township has had these policies they believed in place for decades and everybody is in agreement that they want to keep it, keep it safe. I'm actually jealous because we have a little boggy pond by us and, and that is peaceful and you can't take anything power out on there. It's not dangerous. And we do get more wildlife because of that, but it just sounds so lovely. And I think, was it Satish, did he live, leave? Who lives on the front and the back of his house is on a lake? I think he has to have like, you know, a party at his house so we can all see how beautiful it is. But basically I want to support 100% keeping the local control. There's a reason for local control because it's a huge state with how many hundreds of lakes we have and one policy cannot fit every, every jurisdiction and in this community with how many lakes that we have and the passion for it. And I think the policies we've set in force clearly are working. I would not want to see you change it and have accidents happen. These lakes are smaller and I think they're very well regulated if you can support the policies of the township. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out.
Sir, did that give you enough time to scratch your name on there real quick for us? Perfect. And just so that you know, Michigan has over 11,000 lakes. We have more than Minnesota. Okay. But the one thing that I did find out is that, you know, everything is big in Texas. Just remember that Texas can be engulfed by Alaska. Alaska has over 300,000 inland lakes, some of which are not even named. That, just, just think about the vastness of that. I mean, there's over a hundred, in, in, in Southern Oakland County, there's over 100 small inland lakes. Most of you are aware of that. 300,000. You can easily get lost up there. But anyways, go ahead, sir. You got the mic.
Thank you. Harold Weiss, 1582 Apple Lane, Bloomfield Township. So we are on Dollar Lake, which is off of Lower Long Lake and our property includes an island. The island includes a habitat for swans nesting every year and for sandhill cranes. I don't think that they would tolerate motorboats, nor do I think President Biden would approve of increasing internal combustion engines on our lake. I don't think he'd approve of internal combustion engines anywhere, but I can't see the advantages of converting our lake to an all sports lake since everybody virtually is opposed to it and environmentally it would be detrimental. I swim in the lake. I have bad tinnitus and the noise from motorboats. Danny, can you do the sound thing for me? Yeah.
It's been a long night, folks.
I think would Yeah. Would make, would make me crazy as well as I canoe and swim in the lake and I think that the use of the lake would, would force virtually all the homeowners to change their lifestyle. And I can't see any upside and I can see a whole host of downsides. So if the, if the upside is just to follow an administrative rule, I think that, I think that some flexibility should be applied in this case. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one quick question. When you started off, you said that you lived on Dollar Lake and then you started referencing what you do on the lake. I just want to make sure the activities that you said you do.
Dollar Lake is, is, is a part of Lower Long Lake.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. There are, I think, one, two, three, four, four homes on Dollar Lake. And we're, we're part of the Lower Long Lake Homeowners Association.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Bay of the
Okay. Yep. That make, sure. Okay. Is there anyone else who has not had an opportunity to speak that would like to speak here? Because this is the last sheet that I have. If not, then I got one last little thing. Whoops, I got to put these back on. Getting old, just, yeah, it's rough. Okay. Thank you for your comments and cooperation. We appreciate your interest in that you took time to be here tonight with us. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit written comments by email no later than 5:00 PM on December 16th, 2023. Mail comments must be postmarked no later than December 12th, 2023. Following the close of the 30-day public hearing, the DNR will review all pertinent information and submit our recommendation on the requested proposal, or actually each proposal, because there'll be a total of 10, but on each individual lake after that. This concludes this hearing. I thank you again. Be safe. Thank you for coming and enjoy the rest of your evening.